Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Jason Gaddis is here with the Southwest Baptist Church to lead us in the invocation. We know he's brought his family, his wife and three sons are here today too. We're glad to have all of you down at City Hall. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Skip Kelly to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But everyone please stand.
Dear Father in heaven, we thank you for the wonderful time and wonderful honor of being a citizen of the United States of America. Thank you, God, for our country and especially at this time of the year, we remember our independence and for our nation's leaders who established the country and the veterans, dear God, who have served. And Lord, we thank you for their sacrifice that we might be here in freedom even today. Thank you, dear God, for our state and certainly enjoy being here and living here. And thank you for our city and the growth and development, Lord, even here of recent years and forgiving wisdom. And so, God, it's for that reason that we come to you even now this morning, knowing that we need your wisdom. And these men and ladies before me, God, they need your wisdom and discernment for the good and well-being of our city. And I can't imagine the great responsibility that's upon their shoulders and yet we benefit every day from that. And we thank you for it and thank you for these good people as well who have concerned for their city and desired to see its well-being. And so, God, thank you that we have this wonderful privilege of being Americans and to serve and exercise freedom as you have given it to us. And thank you for government that recognizes that. And so, God, we come to you and ask humbly for your grace and your provision in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The city of Oklahoma City has over 4,000 employees. And every month, the South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club allows us to honor one as our employee of the month. So when you're chosen one out of 4,000, you can imagine what an honor this is. And this morning, we are here to announce that Robert Wilkerson is the Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month. Robert, would you step forward, look, show our appreciation? We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Robert Wilkerson has been a city employee for 23 years and is a master mechanic in the Support Services Division of the Fire Department. Whereas Robert Wilkerson maintains the department's large apparatus, equipment and vehicles, and he works diligently to ensure that repairs are correctly made and in a timely manner to minimize the downtime of equipment. Whereas Robert is a conscientious, productive, hard-working employee who has received numerous appreciation memos from firefighters for accommodating their schedules and a job well done. Whereas Robert offers to help out where needed and volunteers to help the on-call staff with answering calls when any type of disaster occurs. Robert works with the Association of Emergency Technicians when he's off-duty recruiting and training people interested in joining the association. Whereas Robert Wilkerson is always one of the first to donate when someone needs assistance, whether the need is money, supplies or manpower. And he is also involved with Coats for Kids, the Heart of the City Campaign and the Fire Department Christmas DHS Kids. Whereas this council desires to recognize Robert Wilkerson for his dedication, enthusiasm and commitment to the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Mayor and Council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Robert Wilkerson, July 2012, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Now, this is where the potentially controversy starts. We have to vote on this, Robert. We have a motion? Do we have a second? All right, cast your votes. How about that? It passed unanimously. Let's show our appreciation, Robert. Congratulations. That's all you do. Thank you.
Mayor, I gotta take a few moments. I'm gonna scare Robert. He thinks I'm gonna start telling stories on him, but I'll keep most of them to myself. But Robert's been an excellent employee out there in the maintenance shop for years. And the one thing that, although Robert's not immune to throwing a little zinger out, even to the fire chief occasionally, it's still, you can always count on him to do a good job and he won't do it unless he can get it finished and do it right. So I've always appreciated the hard work he's done over the years. So congratulations, Robert.
As we call the meeting to order, we're on item three of the council agenda. I'll look for a motion on item 3B through 3G. These are a series of appointments. All right, comments or questions here? Yes?
I'd like to comment on appointment of Councilman Greenwell to the COTPA Authority.
Your microphone's not...
No, it's not put on. Again, I'd like to express my appreciation for the fact that you're appointing Councilman Greenwell to the Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority. It's long been my belief that more council members ought to serve on these boards and trusts. And I think David's a good choice and I appreciate it very much that you've been doing that. You and I have had that conversation.
Yes, we have.
Been on the council a number of times and I appreciate it.
On cue, Councilman Greenwell walks into the room as we approve his and other appointments. Ready to go on this? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Move on to item four. This is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item four A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for June 19th. And item four B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for both June 5th and June 12th. We have a motion in a second. Are there any comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're on to item five, its request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, outside of the two that are listed on the agenda, there's a couple of others, not very many for a 53-page agenda, but on page 21, item 6AQ needs to be deferred for two weeks. Again, page 21, item 6AQ. And then moving on to page 47, under Dilapidated and Unsecured, starting with 8R1, item B, 5713 South Chertel, that needs to be stricken. The owner has repaired. Item E, I'm sorry, moving to item 8S1. Item E, 1100 Northeast Fran, needs to be stricken. The owner secured. Item H, 906 Northeast Second Street, whereas if that be stricken, the owner has secured. Moving to page 48, under item O, 1428 Northeast Sixteenth, needs to be stricken. The owner has secured. Item S, 4328 Northwest Twenty-Third Street, whereas if that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item U, 1432 Southwest Twenty-Sixth Street, whereas if that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item V, 1228 Southwest Twenty-Ninth Street, whereas if that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item W, 1509 Northwest Thirty-first Street, all the apartment buildings, whereas if that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item CC, 1109 Southwest Forty-seventh Street, whereas if that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item Double D, 3301 Southwest Forty-seventh Street, whereas if that be stricken, the owner has secured. And finally, item Double H, 1013 Northwest Ninetieth Street, whereas if that be stricken, again, the owner has secured.
Mr. City Manager, I believe it was just 6AQ1.
You are correct. 6AQ1 is the only one that needs to be...
Thank you.
Not the entire item. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, let's reassess the council meeting. Convene is Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. It's like 14 items here on the MFA.
One question on H, okay? A work comp liability looks to be 11 and a half million dollars. That would work out to about $2,600 an employee for 4,300 employees. Is that... I guess the question is, when was the last study to look at, to compare having work comp in-house versus just purchasing insurance?
I know Mr. Ryan asked that question last year.
Right.
And it was done fairly recently, but let's not have any guests on that. Let's have the workers, the risk management people come in and answer that for you.
Okay.
But we do evaluate that on a regular basis. And again, I know we got back to Councilman Ryan in some type of detail on that last year.
Is it fairly close or it's quite a discrepancy or...
I think it's, I think we're a pretty good gap where we're at, to the cause of the gap where, the way we are right now.
Okay.
Craig, can you answer that?
I'm sorry, I was hearing the question as I was walking out.
It looks that our work comp liability is 11 and a half million dollars. That would seem to be about $2,600 an employee. Have we looked at, what's the discrepancy between having work comp in-house versus just purchasing work comp insurance?
We actually haven't bid that in quite some time. We haven't, we've been self-funded for a number of years. And for us, that incorporates both our legal fees as well as our actual claims and the cost of the administration. So it's something that we haven't bid in a while. And one of the challenges on getting comparative prices at this point is that we can, we can evaluate what's out in the market, but getting actual bids, unless they know that we're actually going out to bid to make a purchase, it's difficult to get bidders on that, but we haven't looked at that in quite a while.
But you have evaluated what the rates are out there.
Yes. And looking at the comparative rates, we haven't done a bid, a formal process. And looking at the comparative rates, we believe we're still less expensive for us doing the self-funding.
The last bid was more or less than five years ago.
Yes, it was more than five years ago. I don't actually know the last time that we actually did a formal bid process on that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the MFA? We have a motion. Do we have a second? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene is Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Seven items on the PPA. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Yeah, sure.
The fairgrounds development, the hotel motel tax, the 2010, 2011 actual was almost 21 million and then drops in the 11, 12 budget to 14 million and the 12, 13 budget to 12 million.
Doug?
What happened in that year was that the fairgrounds took, let me back up a little bit. The hotel motel tax comes into the city and then we transfer it to the OC PPA where we handle debt service on the fairgrounds. And in that year, there was some fund balance that was built up in the, on the city side that was transferred over to the PPA to allow some extra projects to continue. So the reason it's much higher in that year was it was kind of some of the surplus left over from prior years that was used to fund some projects at the fairgrounds.
So the hotel motel tax has been increasing each year.
Yes, the hotel motel tax has been increasing, but like I said, that's received on the city side and we transfer it over to the PPA for debt service purposes.
What is our total hotel motel tax? What percentage is that?
What percentage is it? Five and a half.
Five and a half.
That's, I mean, your sales tax on top of that?
That's correct.
The five and a half percent is attributed to strictly the hotel motel tax.
That's correct. And it's broken out into those three different purposes.
All right, ready to vote the PPA?
That was last suggestion, I believe, oh three was the last time there was a rate increase on hotel motel tax.
It takes a vote of the people to increase as I remember.
That's correct.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC PPA, convene is Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There are two items. Okay, comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC EAT. Is Dr. Goodlow here? Dr. Goodlow, if you want to come forward. This is on item 8W, but he has come down representing the Medical Control Board and asked to be scooted up on the council agenda to make his report to council. Good morning.
Thank you.
We will need your name and address for the record.
Yes, Jeffrey Goodlow, Medical Director for the Medical Control Board, 1111 Klassen, Oklahoma City. Thank you. I'll keep my comments brief. I have found that many people worry a bit when meeting with physicians. They're concerned about getting less than healthy news. And what I do share with you this morning is our EMS system is in a very healthy state. I do appreciate the fact that we can always count on council support for our fine men and women in the field, in both the Oklahoma City Fire Department and the Emergency Medical Services Authority. The budget for the medical oversight for this next operational year that we're bringing before you, most importantly, does not contain any additional funds that have already not been contained in budgets for the Emergency Medical Services Authority, the Oklahoma City Fire Department and other fire departments that we work with. So you may wonder why we present this budget every year. And this is the opportunity for me to also thank you for your support for the independence of medical oversight provided by our 11-member Physician Board, the Medical Control Board. It is very vital to the appropriate clinical functioning of an EMS system that there be distance between medical oversight and the agencies that provide the EMTs and paramedics providing that clinical care in the field. This allows the physicians, this allows the medical director, this allows the medical director's staff to make decisions solely based on what's best for the patient and relatively immune from some organizational politics that sometimes have a way of creating difficulties in making the right clinical decisions. I'm very pleased to report to you that we look at every penny that is spent in this budget. I can absolutely assure each and every counselor, we know exactly where the money's going. We treat this money like yours and the taxpayers because it is. We always look for ways to save money. This budget reflects a very small salary adjustment for Office of the Medical Director staff. I am not taking any salary adjustment for another year. The staff last year did not have any salary adjustment, so for a two-year period, this represents a 4% salary adjustment for staff. Again, we have worked very hard to keep our operational costs down. There is a tremendous economy of scale with shared medical oversight in both Oklahoma City and Tulsa metropolitan areas. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have specific to the budget or our EMS system. I'll be back in a few weeks with our annual EMS system report, but I specifically wanted to break that report from this budget and let each stand on its own merits. Thank you very much for your time this morning.
All right, any questions for Dr. Goodlow? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Why don't we go ahead and vote on then on item 8W since that's what Dr. Goodlow was discussing. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions here on item 8W from the audience? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. I think we have a presentation on the MAPS III trails. Curtis Brown is here from Garber Consulting.
Curtis, just to bring people up to speed, the MAPS III funding includes funding for the bicycle trail master plan and you all have been working on the connection that would bring Overholser closer to the river connection. And that's, I think, what we're gonna get updated on today.
Yes, we're doing the west part of that connection, running from Council Road all the way up to Overholser. As the presentation's coming up, I'll give a brief overview. Starting at Council Road, we're starting on the north side of the trail, or north side of the river and running pretty much along the top bank of the river, working our way to the west over to about Cannonide Road where it follows the river, turning to the north. This... This slide shows the proposed trail alignment that's been approved by the subcommittees running up. I want to walk through this trail, starting at Council Road, working way around. Starting at Council Road, which is on the right-hand part of the slide, we're connecting in underneath the bridge, following that top bank, following an old abandoned roadway bed that's there, provide a very nice alignment. The shaded area, hatched area is actually the proposed right-of-way takes throughout this area. That trail is fairly flat and runs over to the west. Here, we circle around a sand and gravel business. This is one section where we'll actually have to install some fencing to in order to separate that very heavy industrial activity from the recreation area of the trail. And also, this is a main entry point for a lot of people with ATVs and motorcycles and it's also served as a deterrent, keeping the trail very pedestrian-friendly. As again, we follow the top edge of the, of the bank of the trail, working our way on up to the north. There's the Peterbilt dealer up there. This is an area where I actually have to buy some property and actually taking part of their parking lot. This is because there's a very, very steep, about a 50, 60-foot embankment that is sheer right there at the trail. We moved the trail back from that embankment so as that cliff kind of continues to fail and work its way back, it would not damage this investment. And so, we set that back and that required us doing some takes of that business property. We then duck underneath I-40 and head on up, on up north. In between I-40 and Reno, backside, there's some industrial properties there, very nice green space that would be running. Duck underneath Reno, pop back up on the north side of Reno. We're posing on doing an access point, an emergency access point here with a small parking lot there at Reno. This is about the midpoint in the trail. Will provide a very good service and response area there. At this point, we're skirting the edges of the landfill, running along the perimeter of it and continuing to the north, get out of the landfill onto Oklahoma City-owned property. And we're on Oklahoma City-owned property for the last half of the trail here, following the edge of the river up to the north and east, all the way up to 10th Street. At 10th Street, we're gonna have another parking lot at the intersection of 10th Street and, and the trailhead here. And also do some intersection improvements, including a pedestrian crossing, a signalized crossing where it'd be a push-button activated, stop the traffic on 10th Street, allow the bicycles pedestrians to cross safely up to the north side. And that actually connects directly to a trailhead on the Overholster part of the trail, the east, east trail there. Very briefly, one of the major structures we have, in fact, the only major structure we have is a crossing at I-40. We're gonna have a very short stem wall on the uphill side in order to keep debris and other things from falling onto the trail. More substantial retaining wall on the south side as we are building a shelf for this trail to lay on. And this is a kind of a cross-section of what that would look like where we're building this trail. The material we'll be using for the retaining wall is a stacked stone that looks like this sandstone, kind of weathered. The texture relief in the stone makes it a little bit of a deterrent for graffiti and other. And also, the colors chosen are very compatible with the other colors and stones on the rest of the river trail system and is a very good go-through. The, where we're at, we've pretty much have finished the preliminary report, worked through the alignments, verticals and everything with staff. We're ready to go through the right-of-way acquisition portion of the plans and we're actually coordinating with all the regulatory agencies now the alignment is set. And we'll go ahead and, for time gone. The trail, the construction of the trail itself is about three and a quarter miles with the I-40 structure included, just over $3 million. The right-of-way that we have shown on the plans in front of you is about 53 acres worth as for the potential right-of-way acquisition. And that's estimated at just under $1.4 million for a total of $4.4 million for this west section of the trail. I'd like to open it up to any questions. I know I went very quickly.
Well, I have a question when we're buying the right-of-way. Are we buying that from private landowners or is it the Water Trust or who?
No, no, that is property that is not under a city or trust control, so it's from a private landowner.
Okay. Looks like a lot for trail, but I guess it's a couple of miles.
If you're buying it, you're buying it. It doesn't matter if it's for a trail or for roadway improvements or whatever, you're actually taking title of the property.
Right. Come with your questions. Yeah, Pat?
Actually, I made a comment, Your Honor. I recently was appointed as the council observer to the MAPS committees and subcommittees. And I just want to assure the public that the people involved in this process are dedicated, intelligent and very engaged, protect the interests of our citizens. They are being well-served by this process that we have in place. The subcommittees do a really thorough job scrubbing these projects before they ever come to the main, the maiden committee and certainly before they come to council. And I just wanted to assure our public that their interests are well-represented by these groups of people.
Great, thanks, Pat. Any other comments or questions on the report? All right, Curtis, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that's part of the consent docket. It does not need to be polled. Any other comments or questions on the consent docket from council?
Your Honor, I have a few minor questions.
All right.
On six D Delta, six Alpha Delta and six Bravo Tankal.
Okay, Pat?
And Mayor, if I could just give a list, I wanted to talk about AM, AQ2, BD and CP.
All right.
And CA2.
CA2. All right, Pat, you want to get started with D and AD?
Thank you, Your Honor. D is an agreement with Legal Aid Services of Oklahoma City to represent indigenous, potential offenders of the city's ordinances. And it's about $484,000, a little bit over that. And it comes in our general fund. And the question I have is, and maybe just a shifting of dollars, but when we enacted our original resolution several years ago to charge offenders for their stay in jail, that money went back to the court system? Would it have any... Would it have any impact on our general fund if some of that money is associated with these indigenous people who are sentenced to some kind of jail term, and they have the ability, or they somehow make arrangements to pay back some, did that go back to the general fund to absorb some of these costs?
All the way, all the money goes back to the general fund, so it doesn't...
So it was just a million dollars, right?
That's correct.
Okay, that's good, thank you. On Alpha Delta, this was an authorized open-market purchase of some fly ash, and there's a sentence in the background that says, "Staff recommended rejection of the single bid and to re-advertise in an effort to obtain more bids." Has that process taken place? Did we re-advertise because we go on to buy from a single-source supplier?
Hi, I'm Amy Simpson, the city's purchasing agent. The bid will actually re-advertise tomorrow.
So what impact will that have on then the pricing agreement?
Well, once we re-advertise and award an agreement, then we won't use the open-market resolution anymore, then we'll have an agreement. But we wanted to do this so that we can continue making purchases, but the department will be required to get three price quotes if they can.
Who was the single bidder, if you can share that with us?
I don't remember the name of the company.
Thank you. On Bravo Tango, this is a modification to a street improvement project on MacArthur from Memorial up to 150th. This is a change in the intersection material at 150th and MacArthur. I was wondering, will this change cause any delay in that project?
Paul Bronson, can you answer that?
Councilman Staff has not indicated this would cause any delay in the timeline on the project.
Thank you very much. It's important, I think, that project, we had a security meeting last night, and there was some concern about the project being delayed, and the project's been delayed for some time now for various reasons. I'm ready to deal with the utility relocations, and I would hate to see the project delayed any further. That's good news. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
All right, Meg?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I did just have a couple of questions. 6AM, there were three items, 1, 2, and 3, and these are fairly customary where we work with other surrounding communities to provide services, and this is to provide animal shelter services with Valley Brook, the city of Dell City, and the city of Choctaw. And I was just curious when the last time might have been that we would have looked at those fees. Dell City's paying a significant amount, but the other two are fairly low, and I just thought maybe if we could evaluate that, we might be able to add another person in animal control.
We'll look at those. We haven't done it a while. The reason those numbers are so low is they really have very few animals that we have to deal with. Dell City, we get a lot from them, but we'll go back and look at those fees and see what last time...
I just wasn't sure when. I thought it might be a decent source of revenue for us, and I have had a lot of requests to add somebody at least in that department. AQ2 is an item that I'm very excited about. It's in Ward 4 and 6, so Pete and I will share this, and it's an opportunity to take a look at creating a business improvement district along southwest 29th Street. And I did just want to comment, I see Kim Cooper-Hart is here, and we have had this conversation, but I do want to be sure that as we're working on this project, there are lots of other groups that are working in Capitol Hill. We've got a large effort on 25th Street, and I want to be sure that we are talking to each other and coordinating and making sure that all of these efforts work together with one another. Just a comment. My third, or fourth, third item is item BD, and this, again, probably references Council McRyan's comments. This is a change order in Project 180 in the locations right here around City Hall, Walker, Hudson, Patience Atlantic Circle. And the proposed change order, it looks like it's going to add 45 days to that project, which has already been an extremely long process. And I just wanted folks to be aware. I know that we're working very closely with the museum, and just to make note of the fact that the current exhibit at the museum is a very unique one, all centered around glass. And so we're working with their staff and trying to be very, very careful to be sure that we don't cause any damage to the exhibit. But, and I know we had some utility location issues, and OG and he's been, I think, very responsive to us in trying to move their schedule forward, but do we really think, Paul, it's going to, we're going to add another 45 days to this?
That's the estimate right now. I know that last week Eric did meet with the folks at the museum.
And Councilman Sauer.
Yes, I was there.
So they had a very good meeting, and they're very aware of the issue with the current exhibit. As far as the timeline, that's what's proposed now, but, you know, just as you said, staff is doing everything they can to move the contractors along and get this done as expeditiously as possible.
As I think, as Mayor Coates said when he was here last time, he thought it was pretty creative to find a way to prevent people from getting here. We've done a pretty good job of that, making it really hard for people to get to City Hall and to the Civic Center and to the museum, and anything we can do to speed that up while being mindful of what's going on at the museum, I really appreciate it.
Understood.
And the last thing is CP, and this is a resolution establishing a list of authorized depository institutions for use by our treasurer in accordance with our investment policy. You know, I think probably everybody's aware that recently some of our largest banks around the country have been downgraded. I think these are all institutions within the state.
That is correct. Our investment policy requires that. We, our banking institutions be chartered to do business here in the state of Oklahoma. We also do business with JP Morgan, which is a national bank. Being a national bank, they are therefore authorized to do business here in Oklahoma. We have been monitoring the Moody's downgrade. This occurred just because of a different perspective for Moody's. They're looking at more criteria in regard to the banks because of all the issues with the banks over the past few years. So they're looking more at geographic issues, they're looking more at the type of services that are being provided, and also they're just looking at the overall, their reactions to market conditions. So yeah, we are monitoring that situation. We are comfortable with, at least from our due diligence that we've performed on all of the banking institutions that are on this list, that they do have substantial financial strength and capital adequacy.
I did just want to be sure that we were monitoring that, and I guess a follow-up question would be, within our investment policy, do we have, do we have a policy about the ratings level that these institutions must maintain in order for us to do business with them, or...
Yes, yes, we do.
Great, thank you.
That was Bob Ponkiller, our city treasurer, and he's going to be back and make a presentation a little later this morning about some changes to our investment policy.
It's helpful to have all the staff in the audience. We can get our questions answered. Thank you, Mayor, that's all I had.
Mayor, I...
I wanted to reemphasize, I talked about this a couple of weeks on CA2, on the hotel-motel tax, and pointing out again that this is, I think, something worthy of discussion and study. The hotel-motel tax is 5.5%, which in my experience is low for a lot of cities that I visit, and I'm not sure if the public is aware, but 6-elevenths of that revenue goes to the fairgrounds. And I pointed out a couple of weeks ago that we have given a $50 million infusion to the fairgrounds with MAPS III, and so, you know, it may be worthy of study. Now, I pointed it out two weeks ago, and then I also talked, coupled that with the zoo tax and the transit. As a result, yesterday, there's a front-page article that, every time I deny my kids, will never be used as evidence that I am unreasonable, and, but, has generated enough fear that I think is worthy of comment, because I think that that article was unfortunate, highly misleading, whether that's because there just wasn't enough investigation done, or because it was intellectually dishonest, I'm not sure, but it needs to be clarified. The article says that I think it's time to study whether the sales tax money currently routed to the zoo should instead be rerouted to public safety or street improvements. And then it talks about, at the end, abrupt massive defunding of the zoo, abrupt and major funding shifts, and the dire consequences, animals sleeping on concrete, et cetera. We need to have a discussion about dedicated funding sources, and I've brought up the one on transit five to 10 times. The ACOG in 2010, as part of a regional transit dialogue, indicated that we need to have a dedicated funding source for transit. If you're going to have a regional transit system, it needs to have a dedicated funding source. On a scale much larger than the zoo or the fairgrounds, they talk about a 3/4 cent tax in multiple municipalities, multiple cities, on the order of $100 million, so on a much larger scale than this. And so if we're going to think about doing something like that, we need to study the dedicated funding sources that we have, that would include the zoo and the hotel-motel tax, the fairgrounds, and others. But you need, we need to understand some concepts and where the article falls short. Nobody's advocating for a defunding of the zoo or even a decrease in funding of the zoo. The question is, where does it come from, and what is the nature of that funding source? The city council does not have the ability to reroute dedicated funding sources. Even if we wanted to, we couldn't take what the people have voted on and move it, fund the zoo to somewhere else. It's just not possible. We could stop the funding, but we can't reroute it. Secondly, even if we decided to stop it, it's pledged against debt, against large bond obligations, some of which could be 20 years out. So even if you stopped the dedicated funding source for the zoo, you'd still have to pay off that debt on those bonds. It's simply not logistically feasible, and I wish that that investigation had been done so that these scenarios that are pointed out, that Mr. McCrory is talking about how disastrous that would be, that would never happen. It just logistically could not happen, and so it's a scenario that's not feasible. But if we are going to have a dedicated funding source for transit, I think there are some questions that need to be asked. If we did this dedicated funding source for the zoo 22 years ago, and the fact is, I think, if we did it today, we wouldn't do it the same way with no endpoint. Like, our MAPS taxes have a start point and an end point, and if we do well and we're good stewards with the taxpayers' money, then we do another MAPS and another. But there's checking back in with the taxpayer. So one question, you have to look at all these dedicated funding sources and learn from them, and decide, do you want an open-ended dedicated funding source or a closed, the one that has a sunset, as Pete would say. So, is it, this one is 22 years old, and a lot of people have written, hey, this was passed overwhelmingly by the people, but recognize there's a substantial portion of the populace that wasn't of voting age or wasn't even born when this was passed. And so one question would be, at what point do you check back in with the people? Is every 25 years too frequently? I mean, it's been 22 years. So would it be unreasonable to check back in with the taxpayers every 25 years? How about every 40 years? At that point, the overwhelming majority of the populace either would not have voted or wouldn't have been alive when the vote took place. So one question that deserves to be asked is, when do you check back with the taxpayer? And we all love what's being done at the zoo, and I don't need to be educated on, I was born and raised in Oklahoma City, I went to the zoo as a child, I was going to Willie Nelson concerts at the zoo amphitheater 30 years ago, when a lot of these brothers weren't even born. And I take my kids to the zoo now. I know what it used to be like and what it's like now, and it's wonderful stewardship of the money, and we wouldn't want that changed. But what if, what if someone wasn't good stewards with the money, and you couldn't get the council to stop it? A closed-ended dedicated funding source couldn't be stopped, and so I think that's worthy of discussion. If anything, the success of the dedicated funding source for the zoo makes the case for a dedicated funding source for transit. We just need to learn from all those and have a discussion without some of the scare mongering and drama. Thank you.
Skip?
Mayor, I, the city manager, I wanted to inquire about the 6AB and 6AU, and it's on the appropriations or the funding for legal aid services. And first of all, I want to state straight up, I support legal aid 100%, have served on their board, and think they do a fantastic service for citizens in the state of Oklahoma, not just Oklahoma County. But I'm real concerned in relation to this $34,000 to legal aid, because I was wanting to know, is the Social Services Committee the proper source of funds to allocate to legal aid, or is there another source of funds that would be more appropriate in reference to the total funding for legal aid? Because I'm sure they can't do too much with $34,000, but that was one of my...
Russell, you want to take it?
This is always a difficult choice for the Continuum of Care Committee in terms of how to allocate the very limited funds that they have. Legal aid applied to the three different sources of funds that we have on the agenda today, they were allocated the $34,000 from that one source. They have to wrestle with a lot of different competing interests regarding the value of how that money is dispersed, where it's going to have the largest impact. I think they do an excellent job of that, and if $34,000 is not enough, I don't know where legal aid is able to access additional funds, but they felt that that was a fair proportionate distribution under these circumstances. And I don't think anybody would argue with the value that that entity brings to the community.
We have a contract with legal aid that is to provide services for the indigent, and I guess my question is, why would they have to apply to the Social Services Committee if we have a contract to provide, with legal aid, for them to provide services to the citizens?
This would be, I'm not sure of the services that we're contracting with them for, but this would be, this is a competitive process, so they were, they had submitted a request to provide a certain service, and I can't tell you specifically what that is, whether it's the same service that we're currently contracted for, or it's a separate service, but they had to compete for those funds under that situation.
Well, Councilman, what I hear you asking is that they're getting a $484,000 allocation out of the general fund that we do for our annual contract with them. And then on top of that, they've also submitted through the Social Services process for some specific services, a request for $34,000 on top of that, all of which has the same core sources, the city's general fund on both of those.
Yes.
Both of those.
Right. Thank you, manager, but here's my concern. There is a multitude of other agencies, social needs, that exist in different parts of Oklahoma City, that this is the type of competition that clearly freezes them out, when in fact I think we should just increase what the actual need for legal aid. I mean, if they need another $34,000, and on a competitive, whatever there's, the level of services, that we know for a fact that they do deliver services, and I don't think there's nobody else and no other organization that you could put together that could do what legal aid do for the city of Oklahoma City. Why not just make our contract $500,000 with legal aid and leave these funds that are part of the Social Services Committee to be able to be more competitive with other organizations? And that's basically what...
Yeah.
I mean, if I had a small organization, and it was between this legal aid and another program, I would give the money to legal aid, rightfully so, because I think their services are so paramount to what's needed in reference to our judicial system. But, you know, if we have these funding programs, I just think it would be more, it would be better served in reference to allowing other organizations to participate in the grant-receiving process if we allocated the necessary funds that legal aid needed, and then they wouldn't have to be part of this competition in the Social Services.
A little bit of history on that. The 484 is for criminal defense, for people that, the $34,000 is a grant request that they came in a number of years ago to help people that are in civil cases. And so that's a differentiation, the big amount, the 44 is for the criminal activity defense, the $34,000 is to come in and help. So it's a kind of a different approach on it for people that are in a civil situation, need some help, and so that's why it's differentiated that way, Councilman. And we can go back and look at it, though. I hear what you're saying.
Because it is, it's all representation. If you take somebody out of a house for, on an eviction, their situation is just as devastating as if they had to come to court in a criminal case and didn't have an attorney and had to, and so I think that the totality of the service in reference to what legal aid's mission is, is clear and convincing without a shadow of a doubt. And like I said, I support them 100%, have been on the board, served on the board at one time for 10 years, and they do a fantastic job. But I just think that we could probably look at this in a different light for other organizations to participate.
Yeah, we'll do that. We'll go back.
I think that it may be a difference, or distinction without a difference, but the fact is, the money in the larger allocation is mandated. We don't have any, we really don't have any choice. We've got a legal constitutional responsibility to provide for that criminal defense. The other, we don't have to do. And so I think that's where the division came about years ago, where they would apply for the civil money in a, through the social services program, because it truly is a social service as opposed to the constitutionally mandated criminal defense part of it. There may be a way to change it, just so it makes it, but I think that's how it arose, is one we must do and the other we do if we have the funds.
All right. Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to the concurrence docket. Any comments or questions here? We have a motion in a second. Nice to see all the Maps for Kids projects wrapping up. All right, cast your votes on the concurrence. Move this on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases. The first is an ABC issue in Ward Six. The address is 2722 Northwest 10th Street.
Thank you, Mayor. Is the applicant here by any chance? This is an area on 10th Street that has a number of restaurants and other commercial activities. It was approved by the planning commission with no dissension, and so I would move approval of the application.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions here on item 8A1? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A2 is an ABC issue in Ward Two. The address is 4309 Northwestern Avenue. Ed, we have one person that has signed up to speak.
Who's that?
Chad Michael Bleakley. Okay. Chad, we will need your name and address for the record.
Sir, Chad Bleakley, and I reside at 413 Northwest 54th in Ward Two. And I apologize for not bringing up some of the concerns that I have today. Ideally, they would have been addressed in the planning commission. You know, our democracy is based on property ownership, and being a leasing, I didn't receive notice, and also I know that our commissioner at the planning commission for Ward Two, Commissioner Powers, was not there also. So, some of the local concerns in the area, I don't think we'll address them. I do have, I had sent a letter to Councilman Shaddick, also Councilman Exager, and Skip Kelly, Councilman Skip Kelly. I have other copies if any of the other members would like to see those. But basically, there's four considerations that I think need to be considered here. There's a common theme with growing development areas in many of our historic neighborhoods, that parking is a big problem, and because it's a big problem, it doesn't really get much attention, and I don't know if that's because it's easier, because it is a hard solution. My general concerns here, basically, you know, the PUC staff approved this recommendation based on the assumption that the putt in question is located in an entertainment district, and it's not. It's a traditional neighborhood and classified as such in one of the planning commission reports. Along Western from 36th to 50th, it's a mix of residential, old neighborhoods, and some old business buildings. Most of the buildings are pretty old, and many have limited parking. On this application is unique to me, because first, the last two puds in this little small area between 42nd and 44th, you know, are not currently in compliance with their parking that they agreed to do originally, and this new application is relying on a separate entity, a separate corporate entity that happens to be under the same management group of restaurants, to valet and accommodate all their parking. At this location, they don't have any parking. The building itself, the first pod, when the Spango Lounge went from being a 3-2 beer bar to a full-blown liquor license, although I believe they actually have an ABC, too, so they're theoretically supposed to have food. But in that pod, all 19 spaces for that building were given to that application, leaving no other parking spaces for the remainder of the building. So now, as they come before you, applying, they literally do not have a parking space. Their solution is to use another one of their restaurants under the management group, but a separate corporate entity that's located across the street. Currently, this location is not in compliance either. They are short on their parking, but yet want to take on the entire parking responsibility for another location, using valet service. In closing my letter, I include several pictures that kind of show the hazards of this valet service. One, it creates a lot of stoppages and slowdowns along Western Avenue, because cars wait to get in there. A valet driver has to get into the car, somebody has to leave, somebody has to get out of it. Meanwhile, cars are backed up along Western. The other thing that I'm really concerned with is that it requires every single one, 100% of the patrons, to cross Western to get to the restaurant after they have valeted their car. On Western, if any of you are familiar, between 36th and 50th, it's one of our busiest single-lane streets, with a speed limit of 30 miles an hour, and there's no stoplight, no stop sign, no crosswalk. So it's just going to be adding more danger to it. I think the application itself, as I mentioned, states using off-site parking, already committed to another application, proof of variance of Cafe Nova located at 4800 Northwestern. As a condition of being granted, a 25% variance to build a patio. Cafe Nova was required to have 47 spaces. Currently, they only have 46, because they had to relocate a storage unit, and now their dumpster sits in a parking space, which is why they are no longer in compliance. They were also supposed to lease a lot, which they would valet to, that is located two blocks away, and have not really done that at all in five years. Now, with this location, they proposed to use that same lot, which is already committed to the earlier pod, as the remedy for this parking solution. You know, this project is 3,100 square feet. You know, in a normal zoning situation, they'd be required to have 31 parking spaces. They don't have one. You know, with a 25% variance, you know, they would, you know, require to have 24. So, the main thing I would just like to point out is, the parking in these traditional areas is difficult, but if I equated the parking problem to a forest fire and the customers of the wood, it doesn't make much sense to me to say, let's just throw more wood on this fire, when we're trying to find a solution. As far as the area developing, honestly, I would like more restaurants there, but I think that they have to bring parking with them. Just if you show up to a party, it's BYOB. Nobody really likes the person that shows up last with no beer. You know, and that's very similar to what this situation is, you know, in that. So basically today, I would just ask for a continuance so that these issues, the two puds that I believe are not in compliance, can be looked at, and looked at if there's a solution that these applicants would come up with, such as acquiring property and creating their own parking, so that when they do come to this area, they are bringing some parking. There is very limited parking. From 36th to 50th, there are only 16 public spaces that are along the street that people can use. So there is no way to say, well, this is an entertainment district, or this is the historical area, so there's parking that's public or that there's not, and basically all the overflow will either have to go to compliant businesses' parking lots or on residential streets. And today, largely, most of those are on residential streets, and it clogs those streets, it makes it very difficult for emergency vehicles to get down, and like I said, I would just ask for a continuance so this parking problem can be resolved for the area and make it safe for all the neighbors. I appreciate your time.
Is Russell here?
Russell's in the back.
Okay. Do you have any thoughts about?
At this location, the PUD waived the requirement for additional parking, so that building is zoned for that use with the parking they have available. An ABC rezoning doesn't require additional parking. It's an overlay to the existing parking that's there. Now, his concerns about the two places that aren't in compliance should be dealt with as a zoning violation, and we could investigate them that way, but this rezoning doesn't require additional parking for that structure. The restaurant's the primary use, the overlay is just the ability to serve the wine and beer.
So the restaurant exists today?
Yes. That building was zoned by PUD 1099, and it allowed those uses there.
Okay.
With the current parking.
The zoning allows for a restaurant, but there's not a restaurant going on there today?
Yes. I think there's a restaurant there.
No. This is where the yogurt store was and the...
Okay. It allows for the restaurant, I'm sorry, but the parking's taken care of in the rezoning of the property.
Okay.
But Bob, did I understand that that parking was taken care of by taking up parking spaces from another location?
Well, they proposed to do valet parking to ease some of the parking problems on that property, but it wasn't a condition of this approval. You can't condition this ABC approval. So, all the restaurant owners in that area know that parking's an issue on Western, and so that's how they tried to address it. Now, if some of those earlier zonings aren't in compliance, we need to check those as a zoning violation. But for this property, the ABC didn't acquire additional parking. They presented the planning commission their solution by using valet parking, but it wasn't a condition of approval.
Yeah, well, if... What do they valet park?
It's the retail across the north on 43rd Street, I think is where they were going. So they valet, you pull up, they valet your car, and then, but park is stated, parking is an issue in this part of Western, but there are spaces available that they have an agreement with another property owner. And the applicant might be able to present, you know, his solution better than I can, but...
I wonder if we might, I just, you know, just before this got contacted by the neighborhoods who really, I mean, they're contending that the parking really is occurring in the residential in front of their houses and people, so I wonder if we might continue this and just try and get the neighborhoods and the applicants not here, get everyone together and see if we might find a solution. I think that's a good idea. So I'll move that, move to continue. Okay. We have a motion in a second. Two weeks will be July 7. I wouldn't be here. I wonder if we might do it on the 31st. Okay. Four weeks till July 31st. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On item 8A3, it's a zoning case in Ward Four, 6309 South Bryant Avenue. It's currently C3, community commercial, R1, single-family residential, I2, moderate industrial, and a series of puds, and it would become a new planned unit development. Pete?
There are a number of people here, I think, that want to speak on it, but I think we should hear from the applicant first.
Yeah, oh, the pastor's the only one that actually signed up to speak today.
Good. I appreciate that. I attended a meeting at the church, and I would compliment the congregation on their cordiality and willingness to talk, and I appreciate very much.
Yeah, I know you and Councilman Kelly have both been working this significantly.
Hi, members of council. My name is Dennis Fox, and Keith Gibson and Bob Thompson, myself, represent the applicant. The applicant in this case is a subsidiary of a publicly traded company, and that company is called Republic Services Corporation. They have 31,000 employees around the country. They're an $8 billion company. They're a company that believes in doing things right. They're a company that I think, if you talk to Councilman White, will tell you that any issues that have come up in the last few years involving anything, they have put it at the forefront, and they have been in a position to resolve it. This is a case that the planning commission recommended approval on. It's a case, Mayor, that as you indicated, when you look at the zoning map, there are a number of different PUDs and street zoning and special permits, 11 in total, and this case comes about because of an opportunity where my client was able to acquire some additional property, including what looks like under Putt 83 as a mobile home park. Mobile homes are no longer existing. And some additional property, you'll remember a case approximately a month or so ago that Bob Thompson was here, and there was a neighbor that was concerned about oil and gas rights, and she ended up selling her property to us. And so, we have acquired some property, and as a result, we have a plan under this PUD where we consolidate, have a set of regulations that we think are consistent and provide protection for the surrounding properties. Now, we have for over a year been in contact with the neighborhood to the north and have had regular meetings. My client has also worked with the business owners, both on the east and west side. It was not until about two weeks ago that we were advised that the church had some issues, and our response was, we want to meet with them. And I want to thank Councilman Kelly for setting up that meeting on Saturday night. We did have a very cordial and good meeting. The individuals that were present expressed a desire to, at some point, have the company look at buying them out of the property, and we indicated we would in good faith look at it. We did not make any promises, but said that we would look at it. And what you have to remember is, we have not bought any property north of 59th Street. All the property that we've acquired is south, and our goal in acquiring those properties has been to make sure that as we take dirt and cover the site, and we cover any new refuse that comes into this property, is covered on a daily basis. And so, we're trying to keep trucks from having to bring dirt in, and by the acquisition of the properties that we've been able to acquire, we'll be able to make that continue to happen for a number of years. With regard to this pad, 80% of the existing PUD, the south portion, is at its, just about at its top height. And so, we propose to, on the north portion, south of 59th Street, expand the landfill. This expansion, when you look at it, and on your staff report... This expansion, when you look at it, and on your staff report, the best page to go to would be to go page 20. Correct, yeah, page 20. Page 20 shows you the expansion area, but it also shows you the buffer area. The area that fill will take place is 1,000 feet at its closest point to 59th Street. So there won't be any fill provided closer than 1,000 feet to 59th Street. The rest of that area in there will be detention, water. We have buffer areas with green belts, double row of trees. We decided that in looking at this, we have one curb cut that's on Bryant, that will remain our curb cut. We have one sign that will remain our sign. So what we have attempted to do is make sure that when you deal with 59th Street, we haven't opened up the landfill to additional traffic. And as indicated, where the fill area is will be 1,000 feet from 59th. So we've set it back. This will provide an additional 20 years of service for this landfill. And we think that we've been good neighbors. We listened to the church the other night. We will continue to listen to them, and anybody else that has issues, we will address them. So we're here with Planning Commission recommending approval, and your staff saying that we're in conformance with the guidelines. And this has been a landfill that has been in existence for a number of years. Councilman White is familiar with the history and the longevity of this landfill. But the applicant has, in my opinion, done a very good job trying to make sure and coordinate, not only with the businesses, but also with the residences. When we were told that there was an issue with the church, our first response was set up a meeting, which we had. So we're here to answer any questions. I will tell you that we have Jeff Kinzel, who is a regional manager. We have Sean Steves, who is a general manager, and we have Carl Evans, who is environmental manager, here, in case you all have any questions or if the church raises some questions. With that said, anything that council has from a question standpoint?
Mayor, I think at this point, we could hear from the minister.
Okay.
Unless, unless council, I think it's a, you know, this matter and another matter along 59th Street today pose what I consider to be very, very serious public policy concerns. And I think it's a good time to maybe engage ourselves, not only in a discussion of this particular one, or the next one that's on the agenda here in a little bit, but the overriding public policy about industrial and landfills and all that. It's not an easy, it's not an easy situation for me, I can tell you, because I, anyway, but I'd like to hear the pastor talk, if you will.
Okay. And if there's any issues raised, as indicated, we're here to respond.
Before the pastor comes up, can I ask a question? How long has this landfill been in operation?
Well, it's been involved, it's been, and it's kind of a present location and present mode of operation, probably 40 years, 35 or 40 years. Historically, there has been a land, there has been much more of a dump than a landfill along that area that the county maintained, goes well back into the 50s.
When was the church built in?
I think the church bought that property from an existing church about 20 years ago.
Thank you.
But the pastor can answer those kind of questions.
Pastor Willard Dallas?
He may not tell you why he's, what his main claim to fame is, but from my standpoint, it's important to note that he married Councilman Kelly some years ago, and he said at the meeting that he didn't tie any slipknots, he tied square knots. And I think in Skip's case, that's been, that's been true. It's been fortunate for Skip also that he did that.
Yes, square knot, the harder you pull against it, the tighter it gets. We're grateful to have the opportunity to come and to share with you today. First, I want to thank the council, all of you, for hearing us. It's good to be in America. God bless America. And we want to thank Skip, our friend, neighbor, and all. And we want to thank our councilman, Pete White. Now, we are here because, not because of any protest, but we're here because of concern. In 1992, we purchased the land and church where we are now. At this time, the landfill was just a little bitty place about four blocks north. But during the time after we purchased, we called ourselves being models of people in the community and participants. We bought the church from a Windy Pooh Nursery. The church had been closed, Windy Pooh Nursery had been closed. Grass and weeds had grown up all around the church. Fact is, when I took the congregation to look to see the church, I was thinking about us getting, they all thought I had flipped. Because of the terrible condition that it was in, it was actually an eyesore on southeast 59th Street. Well, we bought it, we've been working, it's close to our heart, we've cleaned it up, we've remodeled it, we fixed it over and over again. It's our love, it's our child, it's something that we built together, and we thank God for the privilege of building it. But as the landfill increased, our roots around us decreased. For every landfill by of property was us losing the ability to have those people who were in those houses around the church. To where now, it has come to the point where the church is actually by itself in this block. There's one other house in the block, nobody lives in. So we're gonna have to do something. And besides that, I know everybody do it best for the smell and concern and all, but we have a lot of folk who have problems with their sinuses and so forth, and it's time for us to find help on getting some of these problems solved. And I want to thank the landfill people for coming. They were courteous, and we had good conversation, and I thank God for that. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to discuss in some factual manner, the manner of relieving us that we may be able to continue. We have a lively bunch, but you know that when something like this begin to happen, nobody wants to say, my church is faith, hope, and love, right across the street from the landfill. That's just not very popular. So we want you all to consider ways, I don't know what way to ask for, but you all are our leaders, and we ask you to find ways for us that we may be able to continue in the spirit of love. Any question to me?
Well, Pastor Dallas, I, again, to restate what Councilman White had said previously, I want to thank your leadership, your congregation, for opening and extending the invitation to meet with the, with the company. And I think that's the beginning of trying to resolve the issues. So many times, we don't have the opportunity to sit down with both parties, you know, in a, in a setting in which, you know, the open dialogue and the conversation can be genuine as it relates to the issues and the concerns. And so to the landfill and also to your leadership and to your congregation, I think you all did a fantastic job on Saturday in reference to a short notice of trying to resolve this issue with the concerns that you all have. And so at least that's the beginning of that. And I just, you know, I was very pleased with the dialogue and the attorneys and everyone in reference to the openness that you all shared and their reception of that. And so that's what I wanted to say, that was a very uplifting moment on Saturday. And so Councilman White had previously mentioned that, and I just restate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you, and we appreciate our councilmen. The church is located in Ward 4. So we have two councilors on our bench. We're grateful. One a good friend and the other one, elected official. If nothing else?
Looks like you're good. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
You know, one of the things, the positive things, I think, that is going to come out of this is that I think it gives us an opportunity as a public body to express what the future holds. That may be, you know, the pastor says that they moved there 20 years ago, and it was small, and they didn't have any idea it was going to get this big. That may, that may be a reasonable conclusion for him to have reached at that time. But I can tell you, we're very publicly saying that this will increase the length of time that landfill will be there by 20 years. There are a lot of public policy considerations in permitting landfills to expand on site as opposed to forcing them to go someplace else. The first thing that would happen if you try to force a landfill to go someplace else or constrict them to the point that they use up their site very quickly, the first thing that happens is you have to find another site. Now, public policy is much different today than it was 30 or 40 years ago when that landfill was sited. You would have a, it would be a tremendous battle to locate a landfill anyplace. You could move it 20 miles out in the rural country, and the people in that area wouldn't want it there either. I mean, it would be very difficult. So that hurdle's already crossed, and I think the city, as a matter of policy, intends to let that landfill run on that site as long as they can continue to do it. The second thing is, if you force a landfill to move 20 or 30 miles further out in the country, you increase everybody's refuse bills tremendously, because that extra fuel that it takes, and the wear and tear on the vehicles that it takes are going to be, you're going to see them on the bottom line on your, on your refuse bills. So I think, as a matter of good stewards of the city's money, I think this is the best solution to expand this landfill. There are a couple of businesses along 59th Street that are very highly impactful on the neighborhoods, that have really, in my opinion, gone far above and beyond the call to try to mitigate their impact on the community. One of them is this landfill, and the owner's New Dominion Oil Company. New Dominion is operating that oil field as if it, as, almost as if it was operated in terms of size back in the 30s, when that was the, that area was the discovery field for Oklahoma City's huge oil field. And New Dominion has come back in, and with tertiary technology is now operating a gigantic oil field right there. Operate it much better than they did in the 30s, but, but they try very hard to be a good neighbor, and this, and this landfill, I could not say enough in terms of their responsiveness. Nobody wants to be across the street from the landfill. So you know, I understand that. And I appreciate the fact that the congregation of this church had just owned up to that and said, that's really our biggest problem, is we can't build the kind of church we want to build across the street from the landfill. And I believe that. I, you wouldn't buy that building today if you knew what was going to happen in the next 20 years. But we can't unring the bell, and that, and I think the landfill has, operators have made what I consider to be a good faith commitment to try to find a way to somehow mitigate the impact that they have on this, on the, these surrounding neighbors. And I, I'm not sure there's more that we can do. But from a public policy standpoint, I think any of the three landfills that we have in Oklahoma City are going to be there for a long, long time, because they're going to be there probably as long as we can continue to permit them to operate. Because, as I said, where are they going to go? I mean, nobody is going to want to site the next one. And so you're just trading one problem for another and adding millions of dollars to the cost if you think about moving them prematurely. So as much as, as much as I identify with the church's concerns about not wanting to be across the street from one, I'm not sure there's anything I can really do from an equitable or from a long-term standpoint, other than move the approval of the, of the, of the PUD. I will tell, I will tell the people from the church, and specifically the minister and the, and Mr. Pettis, that these people, their word has been dulled, as far as I've been concerned. If they told me, if I, because I drive to work either on 59th Street or I-240 every day, if I see trash on I-240, I can make one phone call, and when I'm within an hour, the place will look like ants are out there, people are out there picking up those plastic bags that we probably ought to outlaw. But, but they're very quick, they're very quick to respond. If they get a complaint about odor, they've got people that will come out immediately, take tests, try to find out the source of it. In fact, there was a confirmed odor problem about a year ago, and they eliminated the customer that they thought was the source of the odor. They didn't take that, they didn't take anything from that customer anymore. So they're active in at least two of the schools, one in the Middel system and one in the Oklahoma City system, to try to make sure that people understand. They were, they were, they were a stop this year, the landfill was a stop this year, on the tour that the youth council took of southeast Oklahoma City of my ward. Not because I love having a landfill there, but because I felt like that young people need to understand why we have landfills and how they operate, and they need to see that there's a science involved in it. So they were the source of about a one-hour stop right on the very, very top of that landfill for our youth council this year. Given, given all those concerns, they're as good a neighbor as the landfill can be, I think. That's not to say, I might get this question all the time, would you want to live across the street from it? Well, that's like, have you stopped beating your wife? Of course, I don't want to live across the street from it. Nobody would. I mean, so it's not, I, it's not that I don't have any appreciation for that, it is the fact that I think public policy dictates that we cannot afford, just the financial side of it. We can't afford to do anything other than to make that landfill last as long as we can. We have an obligation to try to make it operate as safely as we can, as environmentally correct as we can, but I don't see I have a choice, but intellectually at least. Emotionally, I could say, oh, yeah, I gotta make all you guys happy and all this, but no. You know, these guys have moved on to Michigan, or I guess all landfill operators are from Chicago, probably. But they'd be gone. But, but that isn't how it works. We still have to have some way to dispose of our solid waste. And so I, as much as I, as much as I understand your situation, but I, they have done as ma, if there's something they haven't done other than move, if there's something they haven't done, and any of you can think of something they haven't done that you'd like to see them do, I would personally assure you, they'll try to do it. They've done it, I have, there've been some way off the wall things, they've asked, they've washed houses before. They've had situations where people said, they live in Oklahoma, and they've got red dust on their house, and they, they attributed all the red dirt on their house to the landfill. They've gone in and washed houses before, just literally took washing, spray washers and washed people's houses. I think they'll do their very best to be as good of a neighbor as they can possibly be under the circumstances. But that, all that being said, I'm going to move the approval of the item. I, but that, all that being said, uh, I'm going to move the approval of the item. And if anyone has any further comments, certainly I don't intend to be the end-all to it.
All right, how about a second?
Aye.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on item 8A3? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Let me say, I'm going to tell you again one more time how much I appreciate the church's involvement in this. And I would urge you, these gentlemen down here in this first row, couple of rows here are, and they're the people that I will personally try to hold accountable for whatever it is they promise. And I would urge you to meet with them on a regular basis because they'll do that. They've done it over the last four or five years on a very regular basis. So, thank you.
Already? Have we voted?
Yes, we voted.
Okay. Ready to go. So, we're going to move on to item 8A4. Uh, this is S.P.U.D. 656. The address is 7200 North May Avenue. Conversion from S.P.U.D. 158, which is a simplified planned unit development in our one single-family residential district to S.P.U.D. 656. This is in Ward Two. Ed?
Applicants here, no, no protests, no controversy?
Uh, yeah, we do have one, we have one citizen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you like to speak?
Okay.
Would you like to hear from the citizen?
Yes, please.
All righty. Uh, would Kenneth Gammon please come forward? Is Kenneth here? Okay, great. Good morning, Mr. Gammon. If you'd please give us your name and address for the record.
All right. My name is Kenneth Gammon. I reside at 8408 Northwest 68th Terrace. Uh, we received a notice of the rezoning and we're, we're involved. We own a piece of property, a home that's, uh, three lots down from the, uh, subject of rezoning. In receiving the rezoning request, uh, my thought was two ways. Should I contest it or accept it? And in doing so, I realized that, um, May Avenue is of course one of the growing and has been, uh, a area for businesses which have been, uh, able to continue their success because of the neighbors around them and the people supporting them. In looking at this rezoning, my, uh, remarks are not towards refusal, but something that I think is, um, a problem that has not been approached and that is public safety. And that is being able to, from either the east or west side of May Avenue for the people that live in that area to safely, uh, have access to May Avenue. The, um, stoplights that are there now are from 65th and the next one is Grand. And as our city grows, uh, the east side of, of May is now filling up with more businesses. Uh, we have one spot that has not been, um, approached yet as far as a growing business and that was, uh, one that was a nursery and has quite a large tract of line of land there off of Cambridge. And so, uh, my concern is that you as council members and mayor, uh, would consider, uh, giving a safe zone to the public on the west and east side of May between Grand and 65th to allow them safe haven as far as access onto May Avenue, either from the west side or the east side, whether they want to go south or whether they want to go north. And this is my reason for, uh, coming before the council. And this is a request that I would like you to consider. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Gammon. Certainly appreciate your comments and we'll have staff take a look at that.
Good morning, Members of Council. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, this is a unique parcel in that, uh, the subject site has a current spud on it. So, two-thirds of the site is currently zoned C3. Um, there was three houses here, all have since been removed. And what this spud will allow is commercial development. So, we went in and rezoned the entire site and we went with a base of C3 and we removed just a lot of uses to, to make it a more appropriate, less intense than you'd normally see along May Avenue. A couple of things that we wanted to make sure we did to, to make sure we were good neighbors with the neighbors to the east is we have a 10-foot greenbelt buffer, as you can see on that site plan, that runs on the east boundary of this site. Uh, there's trees in there, there'll be grass and there'll be a fence. Uh, second, this site plan doesn't reflect it, but we have submitted to staff and it's, it's been what was approved by the Planning Commission, we have installed a diverter onto Lancaster Lane. So, any traffic leaving this development will have to go back to the west towards May Avenue and not turn back towards the neighborhood. So, with that, the Planning Commission recommended approval and we think with the, the modification of the diverter and the 10-foot greenbelt, uh, we, we've created a, a commercial development that'll be a good neighbor with the existing neighborhood to the east. And I'd be happy to answer any questions and my client is here as well.
Does anybody have any questions? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Aye.
Please cast your votes. And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to item 8A5, uh, that item has been deferred to July 17. 8B, um, is an ordinance on final hearing and it's an ABC, uh, issue, a restaurant with an overlay and this is in Ward Three.
I, I have had discussion with Larry on this. Is there anybody here to speak on this?
Uh, yes, there is. Councilman, uh, John and Rudele Atkinson. Would you like to come forward, please? Thank you for coming to answer. We'll, we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
I'm John Adkison. My wife, Rudele, we live at 6403 Northwest 31st Street, Bethany, Oklahoma. And our interest is that we own the property up here at R4, across the street, a little bit west of, uh, the, the proposed, uh, location. And our concern is that, uh, people enter the location off MacArthur and they exit on the 19th. And if you, if you turn right and if you're going north on MacArthur, it's almost impossible to turn north. It can wait forever. So, they tend to go west on 19th Street past our property. Plus, our daughter also lives right down the street at 6101. And, uh, this is basically a, a residential area and we do not believe that we want to have a liquor, uh, place there on that corner to go down, up and down our street.
Ready?
Do you have anything to add?
So, you're here to speak against the application?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, yes.
Is there anybody else to speak? The, the recommendation from planning is to deny the application.
Right.
Uh, is there anybody else that signed up or anybody else here to speak on it? The applicant did not show up at Planning Commission. Okay? All right.
Why don't we hear from the applicant then here?
Okay.
My name is, uh, my name is Luis Adame and I'm the owner of the restaurant. And, uh, I've been talking to some other neighbors and I explained to them what I'm trying to do and I got two letters that approved to, to, so I can get the permit of alcoholic. And here's this. There's a, a baker and other zones behind the restaurant. And I'm trying to find the rest of the people, but I never can get it hauled over.
I'm curious on, uh, you, you were not at Planning Commission to speak on this. Uh, is there a reason you didn't show up there?
Well, the reason I didn't show up the first time there was because I'm trying to haul the people first because they, they give me the letters. So, I'm trying to talk to them before they, we come over here and that's what I get. And some of those people I never find it. That's the reason.
Councilman McAtee's position on this was that since the applicant had not showed up at planning and planning recommended denial, he was going to, uh, move for the denial on it. What we might do is ask for a deferment on this till Councilman McAtee is back and, um, he can, can speak with the applicant and, and so forth. Counsel, any of the council have any other thought on that?
So, I, I think the fact that you did not come to the Planning Commission meeting probably set a process in motion.
Okay.
Um, that would be in your, would not be in your favor with regard to this application.
Okay.
So, I think, would you be, uh, amenable to deferring this item until you might have a chance to talk to some of the other neighbors and meet with the councilman?
I can do that.
Okay. And is, is two weeks enough time or would you like four weeks?
Uh, I prefer two weeks does appear enough.
Two weeks? Gary, do you want to make a question?
I'll move the referral for two weeks.
May we have something else to say about that?
Sure.
Because we showed up at both of the Planning Commission, um, meetings. We will not be able to be here in two weeks. We would not be able to be here because we do have to be out of town.
Okay. Could, could you be available in four weeks?
July 31st.
July 31st, that would be?
We have your surgery on the 26th. 31st.
Is there?
But I do know that some of the neighbors he did talk to who opposed it originally still oppose it.
Okay. Well, I, I think it would be a good idea at this opportunity for you all to sit down and have a conversation and see if we could come to some kind of a resolution.
Can I?
It would be beneficial for both parties.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, get it.
Madam Mayor, uh, is this an issue where the, the legal ramifications are already established in reference to the distance from a school or a nursery as it relates to the, the selling of alcohol?
I, I, I'm not aware of that. I wasn't, wasn't any of that brought to my attention.
Bob, do you?
Bob, is there any problem with that?
Not that I'm aware of. We could, we'll verify that, but before the 31st, but it's my understanding that it's outside the distance required. So, the day, there's a daycare, the church is to the north, just off our map.
Well, the church owns the property, uh, that is just across the street, right there. The church owns the property. We own the next two pieces of property, that one and the house next door to that. And the daycare is the third house from the corner.
We'll make sure and confirm that before this comes back and we'll, we'll talk the applicant then.
Well, Gary, would you, are you then making a motion that we defer this until July 31st?
So, it'd be four weeks?
That would be four weeks.
Yeah, so moved.
Second, cast your votes, please. And that deferral passes unanimously. So, so you'll need to show up, you'll, you'll need to have a conversation. If you would get in contact with, uh, Councilman McAtee's office, he'll arrange some time. Thank you very much. So, moving on to, um, item 8C. This is an ordinance on final hearing, uh, that was recommended for denial, um, by the Planning Commission. The address is 5022 Northwestern Avenue and this would be, um, from C4 General Commercial and O2 General Office Districts to, uh, S.P.U.D. 662. It's a simplified planned unit development district and this is in Ward Two. Ed, do you want to go ahead and introduce this? I know we've got a citizen signed up to speak and I know that the applicant is here.
I think we'll just go ahead and hear from the applicant and...
All righty.
Members of Council, Dennis Box. I'm here with, uh, Tim Johnson and Rand Elliott and then Dan Nadon on behalf of Chesapeake is here. There are several neighbors that were at the Planning Commission that are also, uh, here at the City Council. They, uh, I don't want to speak for them, but they, uh, were in favor of our application at the Planning Commission. It's my understanding that they're, uh, still in favor of it. Um, number one, I want to thank Dr. Shadid for allowing us to meet, um, at his home with, uh, the Planning Commissioner and also the Traffic Commissioner prior to this item going to the Planning Commission. It comes before you as a recommendation for denial, but it was a recommendation that I asked the Planning Commission to go ahead and do to send it on. We were faced with a, uh, Planning Commission that only had six members and we ended up with a tie vote. And as the minutes will reflect, in the next vote, there was difficulty in just sending it on without a recommendation, uh, which is the normal course. And so, I just asked those that, uh, were in support to, uh, go ahead and change their vote so we could get on to the City Council. Um, the issue and, and the, um, Janice Powers, who I have the utmost respect for as a Planning Commissioner and as a person, um, when we met and Dr. Shadid's off, um, home indicated that she wanted us to bundle up several, uh, matters in one application. From a timing standpoint, that didn't work then and wouldn't work now, but we did commit at the Planning Commission that we would reach the same result. And that result would be that if this application were approved, we would come in. And when you see the map, the depth of that C4 property is approximately 125 feet. Now, just south of 49th Street is another parcel that's shown, that's shown as C4. And that is where the existing CNG, uh, station is at the present time. This application is to move what is a small, uh, CNG operating facility and move it to the north. Uh, and Rand Elliott is, has a presentation that he's going to give. He gave it to the Planning Commission also that will show you, uh, the prototype store that will be put in on behalf of Chesapeake at this location. And we have met with the neighbors at least on two occasions. We have talked to the neighborhood, uh, that lives on both sides of 49th Street on several other occasions. Uh, I have circulated a petition that they, uh, are finalizing. And what we have committed to is that if this council approves the zoning that you see in front of you and, uh, Rand Elliott will show you, uh, what we are going to build on the property. But I can tell you from a practical standpoint, as you all are aware, C4 is the most intense commercial zoning district in the city of Oklahoma City. It allows such things, truck stops, it allows billboards, uh, it allows for heavy, uh, commercial uses, trailer sales, a number of different things. We've taken those out. We have a very limited number of uses in Track One. Uh, the underlying zoning is C3, but we've taken out, uh, the majority of uses in C3. Then the underlying zoning on Track Two is O2 and we've taken out a number of uses there. Um, our commitment to the neighbors and our commitment to you is, is that if this zoning case is approved, we're going to come back in and apply for a, uh, closing on 49th Street which will eliminate traffic from, uh, going back to the east on 49th Street. It will also prevent traffic from, uh, going west, which will allow them to go out onto Western. And that is something that the neighbors have indicated they want. Uh, also, we've indicated that we would do a, uh, simplified planned unit development on that C4 tract and, uh, include the, uh, properties that Chesapeake owns, which even though it shows a residential home on the north side of 49th directly, uh, to the east of the C4, that home has been removed. And then there is a home on the south side of 49th Street, uh, just east of the C4. And we would include those within the spud and the spud would have, uh, mirror regulations with the, uh, spud that, uh, you all are considering today. So, with that said, if you all, uh, would indulge us just for a minute, Rand, I would like for you to come forward and show the council what we're proposing. And then, uh, I know yesterday, uh, Dr. Shadid and I had the, uh, opportunity to talk and had some additional questions on traffic. Tim Johnson is here to answer those and then any other questions you all might have.
Good morning, Rand Elliott. Uh, I live at 425 Northwest 15th Street. Thank you very much for your time this morning. Uh, small brochures being passed out that we also presented, uh, to Planning Commission. While that's being done, I just might add that, as everyone knows, uh, Chesapeake is an incredibly, um, important corporate citizen and, uh, all the projects that we've been involved with, with them for the last 23 years have been done with the utmost integrity and desire to improve and make our community better. Certainly, this is no different. And I would just start by saying that, uh, all of us love and appreciate Western Avenue. It's our, uh, very special street in our community and everything... It's our very special street in our community, and everything that we would do to be suggested architecturally would be something that would be very sympathetic with it in scale and approach. If I might just share with you a few things. If you'll look at page 2, it just suggests the existing neighborhood signage dimensions. And I put this in here just for reference because we're going to be suggesting signage that's significantly smaller, not large or smaller than what is allowed. This zoning actually allows a 40-foot tall sign, and we thought for your reference, it would be helpful to know the things that are going on. The 7-Eleven down Western to the south is 22 feet high. It will be shorter than that. There's a billboard in the neighborhood that's 40 feet. Will Rogers Theater, of course, is an icon in the neighborhood at 60. Horace Mann School is there to the left at 17 feet tall. The Cleemers across the street's 24 feet. So these are just important references to give you a sense of scale of the neighborhood. Page 4 is an aerial view showing this location. The diagonal street on the left is 50th. The diagonal street going from the lower left to the upper right is Western Avenue. You get a sense of the orientation. The small building is along Western Avenue. The next page, page 5, shows you an eye level view looking basically to the southeast at the proposed idea. And again, the key to streets like Western Avenue is scale, that you are very sympathetic to the scale. And to give you an idea, the green part of the building, which represents the fact that CNG is a green energy source, is only 13 feet tall. So this is a very small building in scale. The maximum height, including the canopy, is 22 feet 8 inches. And so again, very, very small in terms of scale. You also notice the signage, and we'll talk about that here in a moment. Again, small. This is 19 feet 8 inches tall. The next page, page 6, gives you a drawing that shows dimensions. This is really an important piece of the puzzle. It gives you a sense of exactly what we are proposing. As you can see, the sign itself is 19 feet 8. It's nine feet, if you will, in depth. The overall canopy height, total building height or mass, if you will, is 22 feet 5 inches. If you'll go to page 8, one of the things that we are really focused on here is to sort of reinvent what a convenience store is. Most of them are not particularly beautiful from a planning or architectural point of view, and we're really taking a very important step here to improve on what a store and service CNG station might look like. So on page 9, you'll see kind of typical examples of the windows being full of advertisements and so forth. This has actually been proven to be kind of dangerous because the manager can't see out and see what's going on outside. Page 10, again, represents the idea that often things are piled out in front of the building, which obscures views and sort of makes it untidy looking. Page 11 does the same kind of thing. There are often trash cans, and there are elements to sell wood logs. There are ways to do all kinds of things, and our goal has been to improve on that. And so if you go to page 12, our goal has been to incorporate and integrate the architecture, the signage, and really reinvent what this kind of facility can be. And what you're doing is that you're looking actually west under the canopy towards the building. And one of the things that we're doing is that 50% of the roofing material will be clear polycarbonate, which means that there will be sunlight coming through. If you've ever been under large canopies where they're completely opaque, it feels dark, actually. And in this particular one, 50% of that surface is going to be transparent. If you look at page 13, you're up very close. This would be your approach, if you will, to the main building. And if you'll notice, there's a band of colored elements across the top of the window. Instead of having posters plastered in the window, we're proposing in this instance that we have an electronic band that would allow the advertisements that is normally put there. Those advertisements are done for most stores of this kind because they get additional benefits out of them if you're a customer or, excuse me, a building owner or manager to this. We're proposing that instead of it being something plastered on the window, that it be simply rotated or changed electronically, which makes it much easier. You'll also notice to the left, we're incorporating things like a phone, the wood logs that could be sold in the winter time. Redbox, which is a movie program, could be over there. So it's all organized and beautifully integrated into the building. Number 14 gives you a sense of what it's like being right next to the building. You're seeing integrated trash cans, and then you're seeing the graphic up above. You're also seeing the polycarbonate roof. Page 15 illustrates all the dimensions that we're talking about. And again, you can see that the building height itself is 13 feet, and you can see all of the other accoutrements like the ice machine, for example. So the intent is to really reinvent this to do something very, very special. And then the last page, 16 and 17, are representations with the potential that there might be a building on the south edge of the property, and it was asked that we suggest or list how large the signage might be there. And then there's a loose piece of paper that gives you a sense of the plan, and on that there are little green rectangles. Those represent the CNG pieces, the dispensers, if you will. So I'm happy to answer questions about this. As you can see, it's a beautiful architectural sort of reinvention of this type of building. And thanks to Chesapeake, we've gone forth to be able to do something that would be really beautiful. The goal is that this might be a prototype on a national basis, and so we have an opportunity to do something really special and start it here in Oklahoma City.
Thank you, Rand, very much. Anybody have any questions for Rand?
Do you have the C4 piece that is on the south side of 49th Street? What kind of usage do you anticipate that?
What we have committed to the neighbors is that we will take out the heavy C4 uses. We don't have any specific plans in mind for that right now, Councilman Ryan. But if this is approved, we're going to come back and have a SPUD for that piece of property that will mirror the SPUD that you see in front of you. So it'll be limited commercial uses.
Councilman Shadid, did you want to make a comment?
Russell Claus here.
Russell is probably in the back.
Russell's in the back. I'm sure he can come out.
In the interim, anybody else have any questions or comments?
I, um, I'm very conflicted on this property. I have been. Certainly, the Planning Commissioner of Ward 2 is conflicted. The Traffic Commissioner of Ward 2 is conflicted. My predecessor in Ward 2 is conflicted. I, um, my honest feeling is that if this wasn't this developer, that this wouldn't be considered, that this wouldn't be happening. Sam Bowman, there was an effort to put a Walgreens on this, on this corner. And he talked with the neighborhood, and they looked at traffic and got all kinds of input from Bishop McGinnis High School, which is right across the street, and that was, that was categorically rejected. And Sam, I think, was adamant that it's something this big and of this scale not go on that corner. I think that the silence from Bishop McGinnis High School is telling. When there was thoughts of putting a Walgreens on this corner, they were very adamant, very engaged. When they redeveloped the Chateau, Chateau Cafe and all of that development, they already had the zoning to do a CVS, or that would have been opposed. But Bishop McGinnis was very concerned about pedestrian safety. They negotiated sidewalks for pedestrians, things to protect their students, very concerned about traffic, and then dead silence on this major destination retail development. The neighborhood asking for 49th Street to be closed off likewise, to me, seems like raising a white flag and just asking for protection from what is going to be a major, in my opinion, out of scale development, where they just want protection from it, and they want to close 49th and retreat into an enclave. People have expressed privately that it's too big, it's not to scale for this neighborhood, but they won't say it publicly. And that's, that's a problem. If you can't, if no one's willing to come forth publicly and express their concerns, then there is no, that represents a problem. But there is, I think, a sense that this is too large, too out of scale in terms of noise, traffic, fluorescent lights, around-the-clock operations. I worry about the precedent it sets on 50th. I worry about 50th Street all the way from Classen to Broadway Extension and how the commercialization of that, there's like 11 residents on there, and what happens to those? I'm concerned with the precedent, and I just, this has happened before, and I don't like this getting a denial or asking to just bypass the Planning Commission and come to council. I think that sets bad precedent, and the Planning Commission is not looking for direction from council. They understand this, and they've spent more time on it than we have. I don't, you know, yes, C4 is intensive, but what has protected this neighborhood is the small size of C4. I mean, you can't get a huge Walgreens or something on this size C4. And so by combining it all, you're creating a space that is very big and could have something else. I certainly have concerns about what's happening with development with some of the, with the new chairman at Chesapeake, with the new board members. Are we going to approve this, and is it going to actually get developed? Is it actually, is, or are we going to approve turning this into a massive SPUD today and then nothing happens? We did something similar on 59th. We closed that. Nothing's happening. And so I don't, I don't know, and we won't, we can't know what the internal discussions are going on at Chesapeake and if this is actually going to get developed. So I would ask, I guess, of all those concerns, the primary concern is the process and traffic. And so I would ask Russell, because we've come up with a process. We pass a resolution or Planning Commission, and they have a transportation planner, and they want traffic impact studies with certain developments. But my understanding is it's really on a case-by-case basis, that the transportation planner decides if and when a development needs a traffic impact study. Now, I agree that this is a, this is a wonderful improvement over the other convenience stores that's illustrated in this booklet. The question is, would any of them, combined with 8,000 square feet of retail, you know, be appropriate on that corner? And what would it do to traffic? And I have, I just, I can't understand the decision not to do a traffic impact study. If, if we don't do a traffic impact study here, when would we? And I understand that some of those, that was designed for areas where you don't have development. But here, we heard earlier about the traffic between 36th and 50th. We have, as a city, chased this infrastructure to the tune of $2 million in the last year. We diverted $1 million out of our unlisted 2007 general bond funds to widen Grand Boulevard because of Chesapeake development. We diverted $1 million of the fund balance to improvements on Western because of development. So since we diverted, we spent $2 million on Western Avenue in the last year, I'm just, I'm trying to understand why we wouldn't do traffic impact studies, why we wouldn't look at, this, this is going to have 20 gas pumps. 20 gas, you could have 20 cars filling up with gas at the same time. That's just the gas station. Then you have destination retail, another, I mean, it looks like another Classen Curve on 50th and Western. You don't have anything on the northwest corner of the intersection. If this, now you bring all this traffic to the area, there's, right now, there's billboards on I-44 saying, exit I-44 and come to 50th and Western for this small CNG station. What's going to happen when we have this massive destination retail? What kind of signage are we going to have on I-44 trying to get traffic off of I-44 to this intersection? Once you get all people coming to this intersection, what, what happens to the northwest corner, which, which right now is vacant? And what does that do to traffic? So that's my question, Russell, is if not in this situation, when do you do a traffic impact study?
Well, the Planning Commission's been working on that traffic policy for a couple of years, and that was, went into effect in February of this year. Its intent is to address traffic considerations for rezoning, basically, not a change of use. And the way that we interpreted this application, since it's already C4 and the PUD, the SPD is proposing uses which are permitted under C4 or C3, that that use was already permitted by the, by the existing zoning and therefore was not an upzoning as such that would require the traffic study to occur.
But Russell, at least half of it, if not more, is O2, is being up, it was, so that is a...
With the, I mean, the service station is permitted on the site. Basically, what the S P U D is doing is to sort of rearrange the uses on, on the site. So they could put, they could put the service station where the C4 is if that was their choice, they just decided to, to move it around. The O2 would also provide for parking for the uses as well. So we did not consider it to be an, an upzoning as such that would necessitate the, the traffic study.
Russell, could I be clear about that comment that you just made? Under existing zoning and the existing conditions, the service station could be built on C4.
Correct.
And it would be oriented to Western.
Correct.
So the decision here is to reorient onto 50th Street, which is essentially more commercial already.
Right.
And so we need to create the SPUD to allow the reorientation to Western.
That's what, I...
From Western to 50th Street.
Without trying to speak for the applicant, I presume that's the, the logic under that, under that circumstance. I think that, you know, the 50th traffic would be less of an imposition than the corner on Western where it narrows at that point.
And in terms of scale, Dennis or Rand, that the scale proposed is one similar to what's across the street, and we've got Bishop McGinnis High School across the street. And so that scale of building is similar in height and size rather than a larger office structure that could be built there currently?
Right. The, the plan was, the orientation seemed appropriate because we're basically putting the larger facade to the north adjacent to a larger building, meaning McGinnis, the smaller scale along Western, which is compatible with that. And so it was very thoughtful about doing that, so it was consistent with each location, if you will, and adjacencies.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
How much, if, if you didn't have to make any additional changes as far as the C4 zoning that it presently stands at, and you develop the service station, how much, I mean, how much would that decrease the plan that you presently have as far as actual services? Or would it?
Yeah, but I mean, as far as the size, it could be this. We could probably build the same size that we're building now, but everything would be oriented on Western. And when Rand looked at it, along with Dan Ladon, they believed that an orientation that took the Western and 50th Street together would be better for the city.
When you say orientation, are you talking about your signage or your...
Everything.
Ingress and egress?
Councilman Kelly, related to the scale. The scale has to do with height and volume and mass as it relates to adjacent structures. And so in order to be thoughtful in terms of an architectural solution, you always take into account when you're building a new building in an existing condition, that the scale of what things that would be new abutting those streets should be consistent with that. And that's why the orientation was such that the small dimension, if you will, is adjacent to Western, and the height is small compared to the small scale of buildings generally up and down Western.
And I think it's an important point. I mean, C4 is probably something that if we were bringing it to you today, you would not approve, and rightfully so. It allows 59 uses, many of which are very intense. So as Russell indicated, when you look at our... So as Russell indicated, when you look at our spud, we have taken out two-thirds of the uses that would be allowed within the site and deleted those and taken it down to uses that we think are appropriate. And then with the scale that Rand has talked about, we think it's a win-win both for the neighborhood and for Chesapeake and for the city.
Yes, David, please.
Are there any citizens here to speak against this application?
We have a citizen to speak and I'm not sure whether it's in favor or opposed. And this is Joellen Aaron. Okay, Joellen, why don't you please come forward?
Joellen Aaron, I have lived at 920 Northwest 49th Street for 40 years. So I feel I have a pretty good perspective on the neighborhood. At a time when the city is promoting infill and developing the inner city in the midtown neighborhoods, the city, our neighborhood is excited to have new young families, professional singles, and downsizing retirees to find affordable housing in our wonderful neighborhood. Homes which are close to activities downtown, close to the medical center, close to Chesapeake. We have three people in our block for Chesapeake and close to work. We didn't move to Edmund or to Yukon, taking our tax dollars with us. We remained, we improved our homes, we invested in our city. Two houses on our block alone have been totally rebuilt in the past year. Several homes have been remodeled. It is our feeling that the spud will have a negative impact on the property values on our street and our quality of life. In the future, the property values on the homes which back up to this large facility will decline. They will be harder to market and homeowners could turn into renters. If the City Council votes to grant Chesapeake permission to proceed with the development of their spud, the homeowners and the Douglas Edgemere Neighborhood Association request that the city close access to 49th Street east of Western. The intense development planned by Chesapeake for the southeast corner of the intersection is not a neighborhood gas station. It is designed to be a high-end 24-hour convenience store and a filling station with 20 hoses that dispense gasoline, CNG, and diesel. It is designed to be their prototype Peak brand and to draw people from all over, not just the neighborhood. This facility will abut a residential neighborhood to be separated only by an eight-foot wall. It is also directly across the street from Bishop McGinnis High School, where I worked for 21 years. Most of the 700-plus students drive to school. Potentially, most of those teenagers, or many of those teenagers, will be crossing the street on foot after school to buy refreshments. Currently and in the past, we have experienced increased traffic on 49th Street from individuals and construction trucks attempting to avoid the bottleneck situation at Northwest 50th and Western, where four lanes from the north plus a turn lane narrows to three lanes moving traffic to two lanes within a block on Western. South of 50th Street, Western Avenue converts into a two-lane street from a four-lane thoroughfare. In the past 20 years, Western Avenue has become a major traffic artery confined to two lanes. Much of this happened after a four-lane boulevard, Char-Tel, was virtually shut down by putting in stop signs every two blocks. Drivers who wish to access businesses on Western in this area, especially during business hour, busy hours, find it difficult to make a left turn. The path of least resistance is to turn off of 50th at Northwest Francis, go a block south, drive down 49th Street West. Drivers leaving businesses do not attempt to enter Western, but they go east on 49th to Francis, turn left to 50th, or continue on into the neighborhood to Char-Tel. On the south side of the development facing Western, there is retail space proposed, which has 38 parking places behind the building and to the north of the building, all accessible from a driveway on 49th Street, which does not, is not reflected on this diagram. The current relatively new CNG on the southeast corner of 49th Street and Western will be closed. Although that property is not currently in the spud plans, it shows a future development of the property to be retail, office, or food service. There are 26 parking places behind that building, only accessible from a driveway on 49th Street. All the traffic from those businesses is directed onto 49th Street. Please understand that the Neighborhood Association is not totally against the project. We are against the size of the project and the design which directs traffic out onto 49th Street and into the neighborhood. We are also against the 24-hour store. People can access gas pumps with a credit card at any hour. A store brings 24-hour noise, fumes, as well as undesirable foot traffic through the neighborhood. More foot traffic brings more crime. We were told that the 24-hour store was not negotiable. The presence of idling semi trucks queuing up three-deep on 49th Street to access the site has already begun the invasion of the neighborhood and construction has not even started. This does not bode well for the future. Other semis, such as U.S. Foods, a local company, have used 49th Street to access the CNG because they missed their turn. They had a very difficult time maneuvering that large semi to access the CNG because they had missed their turn. A day or so later, on Father's Day, there was an explosion involving a Metro bus which had a broken fuel line. Western was shut down at 49th by the fire department. Local cars were not permitted to turn on their engines until the situation could be contained. This is not the first time that's happened. Daily vehicles from the CNG turned down 49th Street and many of those vehicles belong to Chesapeake. When this intense development begins construction, where are all the workers going to park? If the past is any indication, many of them will be on 49th Street. The size of the project and the 24-hour store, we feel, has, is not really appropriate. However, if the city decides to grant the spud, then the residents and the Neighborhood Association wishes the city to mitigate the impact of this project by allowing the street to be closed. Douglas Edgemere Neighbors have met several times with Chesapeake representatives. Chesapeake has generously agreed to pay for the application for the closure and all costs involved to close the street and to create a hammerhead turnaround for city vehicles. However, to date, it does not show that those two homes, which are currently listed as R1 and are not in the spud, Mr. Box today indicated that they would be rolled into the spud. That, that has not, you know, that was not in the original plan, to my understanding.
Ms. Aaron, could I ask you maybe to take a minute or so to try to wrap up for us?
Yes.
I've got other folks to be heard.
Closing of the street would cut down on car traffic as well as foot traffic and make the, make the street safer for the children who live there. We have five children in the neighborhood. We also request that the landscaping be commensurate with other developments of Chesapeake and Total Environment, which are near their campuses. We ask the Council to please thoughtfully take our concerns into heart, to heart and to consider our request.
Thank you very much for coming down. I appreciate it. We have another citizen to be heard. It's Rebecca Zahn-Pitzer. Thank you, Rebecca. Once again, we need your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Rebecca Zahn-Pitzer. I live at 917 Northwest 49th Street. I'm one of the five houses that are most directly affected by, by this development. Thank you, Mayor, and Council, Council for listening to us this morning. Actually, to speak on a couple of issues of what Mrs. Aaron said, the neighborhood did meet, I have spoken with most of my neighbors. We are in favor of this project. Now, in a perfect world, the businesses would have been kept up, they would have stayed there, office, the agency, insurance agency office would have been there and people would have kept their businesses up, but that didn't happen. So we have these four lots, three lots, that something needs to happen. We've been doing the research. We know what could go there if this project is not approved. We know that technically, according to the current zoning, a Motel 6 could go where the old state insurance building used to be. We know that a Taco Bell could go where the old car wash used to be. We don't want those projects. We don't want to, this to turn into four fights over four properties. The city has a love-hate relationship with Chesapeake. We love their Christmas lights. We love the business they bring into our city. Don't, aren't always the happiest with their purchases of buildings, but in this aspect, we trust them. Overall, we trust them to do what they say they're going to do. They have worked very well with the neighbors. They have met on several occasions. Biggest thing that the neighbors asked for was a masonry wall to, to buffer the sound between the business and the homes. They, they readily agreed to that. The times in which trash would be picked up from the, from the building, they've agreed to that. They did so much work ahead of time with the kind of lighting to make sure that the lighting that they approved would not be, would not affect the neighbors. They did a lot of thought into this. Granted, in a, in a perfect world, in a perfect world, we, it would be nice if it was just a little bit smaller, but the overall project, we know that we can trust what Chesapeake has said they were going to do. We know they keep their properties up. We know they keep them clean. This is a project that, in light of what could be there, we are in favor of, and we ask that you do approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. I appreciate your comments. Counsel McGreenwell.
Yes, Your Honor. Is it very difficult to close the street, 49th Street, which the neighborhood is requesting to do?
Well, is it hard legally or is it procedurally or is it hard physically?
Both.
Well, we've got processes to go through where you do the notification to the neighbors and you go through that process. We've done that from time to time. And closing it off physically isn't a major, is not a major construction cost.
You just put a barrier up.
Well, no, I think you'd want something more permanent than that, especially in that location.
Okay. The fact that there's 20 pumps, we've got two facilities in Ward 5 that, one's currently being built, one's already there, that I'm sure has at least 20 pumps, if not more. So that part of it doesn't concern me. Counselman Shadie, the destination retail aspect of it, is this something more than a convenience store or is it just a convenience store?
Counsel Greenwell, in the corner, is going to be a convenience store and then there'll be the CNG, there'll be the gasoline, diesel pumps. On the south portion, there'll be a Phase 2 that will allow for a little retail center that will be part of Phase 2 construction.
Is, excuse me, is that this facility, that the retail?
Yes.
Will come into play? But up here, it's just the gas pumps?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. And to answer your question, I was just handed the authorization letters from many of the neighbors that are in the audience, authorizing us to proceed on the closing. So procedurally, that's not difficult. You are the ones that, from a public policy standpoint, will make the decision whether it ought to be closed, but we are committed to filing that application along with the spud. The issue in regard to the two tracks next to it, if the neighbors want to leave it R1, we're fine with that. If they want us to include it in the spud, we'll do it. But that is something that, just like has been mentioned here, Chesapeake will continue to do what they do in every case, and that is try to sit down and make sure the neighbors understand exactly what we're doing, be a good neighbor, and include them in the process.
Other than having some CNG pumps, this is just like another, I know it's going to look a lot nicer than your normal convenience store, but nothing unusual besides the ability to purchase CNG gas?
I think the only thing unusual would be the fact that we have taken what would be allowed and was existing on the site, which was billboard, tall signs, an old gasoline station, and a facility that allowed for the washing of cars. And we've come up with a, a modern design that I think all the neighbors are excited that Mr. Elliott has come up with. So we've put the scale where what you see is, is what you get in regard to our design.
Well, I would like to make this comment. The signage is, is, is very nice, in my opinion, and perhaps this will be used as a model as we go forward. And I do think at some point we need to address a signage ordinance going forward because, anyway, I'm getting off point. But, you know, I don't see the traffic problem taking place unless there's that much demand for CNG fuel. I wouldn't go out of my way, again, I know this is going to be a nice facility, but I don't see myself going out of my way to trying to get fuel here or use this convenience store. And I go up to 50th and Char-Tel three times a week. One's a Saturday morning, two's in the evenings, and, and I don't see a problem with the traffic now. Hopefully, this will be successful and it will create some traffic, but it's hard for me to believe that a convenience store is going to be considered a destination point. Granted, it's, it's a little bit larger than normal, it takes up more space, but at the end of the day, it still looks like a convenience store with me, that you can buy fuel. So, anyway, thank you. David, this is not a convenience store. It's a, it's a 20-pump gas station, a state-of-the-art convenience store, and then a retail that could have fast food, medical offices, any kind of retail. And then you're going to close 49th Street, so you're going to have even more land that could be developed, and then you're going to have the land where the current CNG station is on the south of 49th. So you could have retail all, I mean, it could just be one big, you know, mini Classen Curve. So I, you know, it's not... I think that's what the, if I would have to guess, I would say Western Avenue between Northwest 36th Street and Northwest 50th is prime for commercial development. I got to believe at some point it's got to be widened to four lane, but it's a very good location as far as the city of Oklahoma City and, and the ability to place commercial development. Just look at the applications we're getting for restaurants and, and clubs and things like this. I will have to say, I mean, I would just repeat what this one citizen said, that as far as quality of projects, I think Chesapeake certainly has demonstrated that they go first class and they'll maintain it. So if you know it's going to eventually develop into more of a commercial area, why not let somebody that you've got confidence in to develop it in a first-class manner? I mean, this is very attractive, at least the drawings are. And it could be very worse. I think the former convenience store was an example of what you could see go in there.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions. How many residents live on, on 49th Street? Do anybody know?
I think there's 16 homes.
20 homes that, that's on 49th Street?
Sixteen.
My question is that...
Eighteen.
Okay, all right, all right. So given the fact that you have some density of residents on, on 49th Street, what negative impact is that going to cause to... impact is that gonna cause to those residents if you close 49th Street? And what impact does it have on public safety issues of closing 49th Street? Does anybody have any answers in reference to that?
Russell, could you, thank you.
From a planning perspective, we would prefer the street remained open to retain the grid network there. There may be some additional traffic generated, but from a planning perspective, we don't think it's a good idea to close the street. Public safety, the fire station's on the corner there.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry to interrupt, but what's the problem as far as putting signage out there that says no parking along the street? Can you do that?
You can always do that. You could also prohibit trucks from using the street, so there are other ways. We could use traffic calming methodologies also that would provide a visual deterrence to that kind of use.
How do you prevent the trucks from using the street?
Well, I mean, by...
Ma'am, excuse me. First of all, we need your name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry?
I need your name and address.
Martha Jett, 4914 North Harvey Parkway.
And what is it you wanted to speak to?
Well, I'm just curious how he intends to enforce, if you don't close the street, how do you enforce that trucks can't use the street? And as far as putting no parking signs along there, a lot of these homes only have single-car garages, so the residents park on the street of 49th, from Francis to Western.
Okay, thank you. Russell?
Well, as I just mentioned, I mean, you can narrow the street at the entrances. You can also, as I said, post signage to prohibit trucks using that street, keep it to local traffic only. There are ways to do that. You can also change the angle that you enter and exit the street as well, so that would prohibit trucks being able to actually navigate those intersections. There are ways to do that.
You know, we've discussed many things like that, putting entrance barriers to try to direct the traffic. But at the end of the day, it's a nice residential street, and I've, the residents felt like if you closed it, they would have a nice residential street and not have to constantly have an issue going on at that West End.
I appreciate your comments about that. We're really not here, though, today. I don't think to talk about closing 49th Street. That's not our issue. We're here to discuss the application for this particular SPUD.
Okay, let me just say this. This is an extraordinary development that they want to put in. I don't know what it is people want on this land. It will be developed. I'm not really understanding what would be better, who would be a better developer. I don't get that part, but what I am asking is, this is an extraordinary development, and if it's going somewhere, why can't we have it? Why can't we have something modern, fast-forward-moving, futuristic? CNG is on the table. It's not gonna go away. So, why can't we have something presented by someone we trust, we have established a bond with? We think they're gonna do what they tell us they're gonna do. We know they take care of their property. That's our biggest thing, is not to just come, some fly by night, then come in there, rig up something, and then go away, and it's trashed out. We want something nice there. We've had trash there. We want something nice now. And this seems to me to be, to fit that bill.
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you, David.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Councilman Martin?
I've got a couple of comments. First, David, if you want to revisit signs, Councilman White and I would be more than happy to let you chair the next task force for that. Right, Pete? Yeah. I'm assuming this discussion about closing the street, you'd close it at the, if I'm looking at this drawing here, I'm assuming you're gonna say that the closing would be at the property line of the new putt, or SPUD, or whatever it is. Is that correct?
Yeah, Tim Johnson with Johnson &amp; Associates. Yes, we would, Chesapeake actually owns those 50-foot lots that had single-family on them, and we'd use those lots to create the turnaround.
Okay. So, if you close the street there, that still gives that driveway on the north side of 49th Street access back out to Western.
Western, that's correct.
That's your intent. Would there be a problem in either an amendment or a commitment not to build that driveway until the street is closed? Could you live with the other three exits, one on Western, two on 50th, until we see whether the closing of 49th is successful or not?
Our current plan is to have a diverter there and allow for the traffic only to go that direction. Of course, we all know that four-wheelers like to drive over diverters, but we intend to do a better job on that diverter than was done on the one on the south side, but that was our intent, is to not allow traffic to turn and go east. I don't know if our applicant would agree to that at this point, but we can consider that.
But I'll go back to my original question. Would the project work if you didn't have that driveway either temporarily or permanently, depending on whether the success, the closing of 49th is successful or not?
The current plan has a single access between the two buildings onto Western, which is about 200 feet south of the intersection. We did it on purpose to relieve that what is now congested intersection. That would cause both of the retail parking areas to exit out of Western, that one driveway. It's workable. It just creates a little more congestion for the commercial use, but it certainly could work.
Dan Ladon, Chesapeake Energy. We would be willing to keep the south drive of where that C4 is closed until the street, if 49th was closed. If 49th doesn't close, we would need to keep it open for access to the site. Does that make sense? On 49th...
You're willing to keep it closed until the closing of 49th happens? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And what if the closing of 49th is not successful?
Then we would need to keep it open for access to that site.
So, you're saying is you're willing to keep it closed until you hear one way or the other, but you're gonna open it regardless?
Basically, yes. It's important to the site. If 49th stays open, we need access from 49th into the site. It's the same opening that was there for the car wash today, that was currently there. There's also an opening directly south of that to the C4 site on the south of 49th for the current CNG, so it's not gonna change what's currently there.
My guess is, and I could be wrong, if somebody is gonna push an application to close the street, that will know that before you finish construction of the project. Is that a fair assumption?
We would proceed immediately if you approve this, the closing of 49th Street.
Are there any further questions? Councilman, do you want to go ahead and make a motion?
I do. I think there's too much discussion and negotiating going on. I mean, this is, I mean, and it's still being tweaked. You know, I think unless there's more opposition, I would end up voting for this and this happening, but, you know, I see the city chasing, I think there are gonna be traffic problems, and I think, especially on Western, and I think the city is ultimately gonna, and the taxpayer is gonna be asked to fix this and spend more money, just as like the $2 million that we've chased after it in the last year. I'd find that the answers for why we haven't done a traffic impact study confusing and disheartening and inadequate, and I would move, even, I just want some, if it's an educated guess or some kind of, I want to know what is likely to happen and what were the taxpayers likely to be faced with in the future. I, you know, this is a great project, but the question I have is why here? Why do the prototype on 50th and Western? Why not do it on a Northwest Expressway or somewhere else first? See how it works? See what kind of traffic it brings to it? And then put it in the middle of the neighborhood? Why does the prototype, why does the first experiment go on 50th and Western? I guess that's...
Mr. and Dr. Shadid, I have a comment, though. This is not the first experiment. I know of at least two locations in my ward where we have these unique facilities, great big service stations. One put in over the protests of the neighbors. Since it's been in service, there's been no protests, no comments, no negative comments at all. I mean, they may be there and just not have expressed themselves, but they have been successful so far. And one is on a, they're both located in fairly high-traffic areas, Memorial and McCarthy and Memorial and the entrance to Royal Creek. There was opposition there, and the opposition was similar to the opposition we've heard today, traffic, lights, noise, those sort of things. These are projects, after they've been developed and opened, have generated the kind of problems that people are concerned about. Now, I don't think there was a traffic study done on either of those. I don't believe there was a traffic study done on either of those two projects.
Councilman, do you want to make a motion?
My comment is this. It seems to me that there's a lot of things going on here that don't, that ought to be done at one time. I mean, we've got this traffic study concern, maybe as Pat points out, it may or may not be reasonable, but we have a, we don't have a definitive recommendation from the Planning Commission. We have, if we have a definitive recommendation, it was denied, and I don't really think that's what they intended. I think they just, well, they got to that. And third, I think that it's, there's moving parts involved in it. You've got the closing of 49th. You've got what's gonna happen to the C4 south of 49th, and you've got whether or not you're gonna take in those two unoccupied lots there that are immediately east of the, both C4 applications. It would seem to me that there is a better way to do it. It is, as the lady pointed out, it's a big, this is a big deal. You can call it a convenience store, but it's not your normal convenience store. My guess is it's larger than your normal convenience store. It's a gas station, but it's not your normal gas station. It's a big gas station. You've got all these other moving parts to it. I'm not sure we wouldn't be well off to put them all and be able to address them all at one time. Plan unit developments or special-use permits, those kind of things are designed to get additional concessions, solve problems in that process. And I think we're walking away from the opportunity to perhaps look at this and solve a multitude of problems instead of just taking it a little bit at a time. That's, I'm gonna be, I mean, I'm not gonna make a test of fellowship about it, but I just think this, a better way to do it would be to try to put it all in one package with the street closing, with the redo of the south C4 and those two houses, all into one package, so we know exactly what we're gonna get. And I agree with the statement that Chesapeake's likely to do. They're probably as likely as anybody around to do what they're, what they say they're gonna do, but I'd like to get it all done at once.
Councilman, may I ask a question? Dennis, there was a request for an easement to be submitted. Has that been done?
It's, my understanding...
Yeah, we agreed to it. I'm not sure that they have it in their hands.
But it has been agreed to.
We've agreed to it. And Councilman White, I think your points are well-taken, but I want to bring you up to speed on what's transpired here that really answers some of the questions that you've raised. Number one, before this went to Planning Commission, we had a meeting with Planning Commissioner and Dr. Shadid and the Traffic Commissioner, and there was two schools of thought. The Planning Commissioner wanted everything combined into one, and from a timing standpoint, that could delay us up to six months and a year, but we committed then, just like we're committing today, that if the council approves what you're looking at today, we will file an application for closing on 49th Street, and you'll have a SPUD on that C4. The two residential tracks are inconsequential. If the residential neighbors want to put in a SPUD, it'll be, if they want it left residential, it'll stay residential. It does not matter to us. But I think it's important for this council to know that what we're telling you today, we had that same discussion with Dr. Shadid and Janice Powers months ago. Now, in a perfect world, maybe it makes sense that you put everything together, and you look at it, and you make decisions. Well, a year, a year and a half later, we will be in a position with your staff saying they don't want to close the street, with the neighbors saying they do want to close the street, us caught in the middle saying, we don't care, we want to do what's right for the neighborhood. If the neighborhood wants it closed, we're gonna file the application, we're gonna take care of all the attorney fees, engineering fees, and process it. If it's not closed, then we'll provide the diverter system, and as Dan Ladon said, there are two curb cuts that exist on what's shown as C4 on the south side and the north side now. So, from our standpoint, we think we have brought a package to the city that takes away billboards, takes away numerous uses. It allows for a project to proceed in a timely fashion with our commitment that you'll have Phase 2, which will be the SPUD and the closing coming immediately. So, we think it's a win for the city, it's a win for the neighbors, and it would be a win for Chesapeake. So, we'd ask you to consider it.
Can you make one more comment? I mean, that's a good response, but if you knew months ago that the neighbors wanted the street closed, and you knew months ago that they thought it was large, and they wanted to know what you're gonna do with this other stuff, then months ago was the time to have done this. The fact that it's now being vetted publicly is not, I'm not moved by that.
Well, but I like the argument. You're good at that, but...
But I'm not moved by it.
But what we told the neighbors, if the Planning Commission recommends approval, we will proceed on, we'll get our closing application filed in SPUD, and the Planning Commission came up and said, 3-3, and then we ended up with a no, and so we said, we're still committed, we just need to find out what the council's position is. So, that's why we're here.
I want four more weeks. I don't think a six to 12-month delay is reasonable. If there's not more protests, I'm there with you, and this gets done. I want one more meeting with the neighborhood on a massive scale with everyone in that area. This is the first I've heard that the Planning Commission doesn't want to close 49th. I want to investigate that. I want more data on traffic and what the city's implications are gonna be. I don't want to delay this, but this is, this is, I appreciate, Pat, the two gas stations that went in Ward 8, but this is, I think, a little bit different, and some different questions. And I just want four more weeks, and then, so I'm asking for a continuance.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
All righty.
Do you want to hear an argument? Councilman White thought I had some good argument, so...
If I could just clarify one thing. I don't think anybody said the Planning Commission was against closing it. I think Russell said staff, traffic-wise, would be hesitant to approve closing 49th Street. I don't think he was quoting the Planning Commission.
And from our standpoint, we would like a vote up or down today, because what we have talked about is not anything that is new, and we've been consistent both with Councilman Shadid and the neighbors. So, you know, we could build, you know, a project today on the C4. What we're doing is eliminating a number of uses in the C4 and spreading it out to where it's better for the city, so, but that's our position.
I am certainly aware that this has been under discussion for many, many months, and there have been a series of meetings, and, you know, you are here today to ask for a vote, and I understand that. Councilman has made a motion, and we have a second on the table, to vote for a four-week deferral.
Yeah. I'm gonna probably vote against the deferral. I agree. I think this thing needs to, it's been vetted for a long time. We've all been hearing the discussions that have gone on about this. The property has been cleared, it's been, they've been working on it. You've heard some neighbors here today that are hesitant to be for it, and you've heard some that are for it. And on the closing of 49th Street, I don't think the neighborhood necessarily wants 49th closed until this thing is approved, and it's gonna happen. If this thing doesn't happen, I'm not sure they want 49th Street closed. So, to say that it all should have happened, you know, should have started all that ahead of time, I think that it's reasonable to say, we're gonna wait and see whether it's approved before we push on with closing 49th Street. this is approved before we push on with closing 49th Street." So I'm going to be against deferring, and I'm going to be for voting on it.
Any further comments before we vote on the deferral? There are none, if you all will cast your votes. And we have a tie. With somebody who didn't vote. Pat. Oh, so I need to do that again? That we still have a tie. You're voting against?
Against.
Okay. Let's see if we can make that work. There we go. Okay. So the motion to defer fails on a vote of four to three. So do I hear a motion then either to approve the application?
I'd like to run a little faster.
Is there a second? Already? Then -- I'm sorry. All those in favor, in all those voting in favor of approving the application to change -- to approve this spud application, please cast your votes. And that motion to approve passes by a vote of five to two.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everyone. All righty. So moving on in the agenda to Item 8D. We have an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval. This is closing the street east and west of South Rockwell and extending south of Southwest 29th Street. This is also in Ward Three. Gary, are you in--
Anybody here to speak against this? Nobody signed up?
Nobody's signed up.
Motion to approve.
Thanks. All those motions passes unanimously. Item 8E is an ordinance on final hearing, which is also recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, and this would be to change the name of Tuscana Boulevard, which is located between North Mary and Metzalina Avenue, to Watermark Boulevard. This is in Ward Eight. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up to speak on this particular issue? This is a -- philosophically, I'm not sure this is the right thing to do, but it is an area that has not been developed. I have a question, philosophical question, about naming streets after commercial enterprises. But since there's nothing out there yet, this is the only commercial enterprise that may be appropriate. I'm not sure what our policy is about this, if we indeed have a policy, but I move for approval.
Second? Cast your votes, and that motion passes unanimously. So a second on the emergency?
Second.
Second? Cast your votes, and the emergency is approved. Thank you. Item 8F is also an ordinance on final hearing, and this is a special permit for a scrap operation in the I-III heavy industrial district at 5200 Southeast 59th Street in Ward Four. Pete, you've had lots of these.
Again, I'd like to hear from the applicant. This is another one of those public policy problems. We need to hear from the applicant.
And we do have -- are these all -- parentheses, are all related to this? We have a number of people that have signed up to speak. And Pete, shall we start?
I'm really here, the applicant.
Okay. Applicant first, Roland Tagg did sign up, full or lonely. We have your name and address, place for the record.
Thank you. I'm Roland Tagg. My address is 100 North Broadway. I am appearing here as attorney for the applicant. The technical applicant here is Georgia Gulf Chemicals and Finals. They are the owner of the property. My client, Midwest Scrap Management, has entered into a contract to buy this and to install a shredder and operate a recycling facility principally for steel-type metals. This whole area is all -- or the whole 88 acres is all I-III, except there's a small track at the front that is I-II. Previously, the operation there was a chemical plant that created a powder that was used for making PVC pipe. We have applied only for a special use permit on 19 acres at the back of the property. The property is ideal for our use because it has a rail spur that goes in. We will install a state-of-the-art shredder. I've learned a lot about shredding metal while going through this process, but this is a device that can actually take a whole car and put it in. It shreds it and makes it into a ball of steel that's ready for recycling. In other words, it can go directly to the mill. You see a lot of recyclers around town who are using temporary equipment or equipment that doesn't make mill-ready steel. They have to send their products through somebody with a machine like ours to prepare it to go to the steel mill. My client tells me that two-thirds of all steel produced today comes from recycling. So getting the steel out into the train cars and to a steel company is vital for us as a public in creating steel. The location of the shredder is actually a quarter of a mile from 59th Street. Once the shredding operation occurs, it goes into the rail car that exits to the south. The only access to this particular 88 acres is off of 59th Street. Before we went to the Planning Commission, we met with the neighbors who live across the street to the north of our track. And I would tell you before we start that you all probably know this. This is an industrial area that was created back in the '60s. I think the Chamber of Commerce was trying to bring industry in, and eventually in '73, General Motors announced that they were going to put the plant in this area. This particular quarter section, if you look at an aerial photograph, you'll see that there's open-pit mining, there's concrete pipe manufacturer, all kinds of I-III uses. And that is where you would put a scrap operation, is in I-III. When we met with the neighbors, they were concerned with several things. One of the things had to do with traffic, and they were concerned that these trucks that would be entering the facility would be stacked up along the street. So we redesigned the street, the entrance, and we're making it wide enough and adding an additional lane, so there will be three lanes that go from 59th Street to the special use permit area. And that will allow two lanes of trucks coming in, 36 trucks, which is far beyond what we would ever expect to be there, but it will get the traffic off the street. They were also concerned with trucks turning left or turning out of the facility when they left and go back to the left. We've agreed to put signage up to -- so trucks will turn right as they come out. They were concerned about trucks turning left. We've agreed to submit to the planning, I mean, to the Traffic Commission signage or proposed signage that would prevent a left turn for westbound traffic. In other words, we're trying to encourage the traffic into this facility to come from the west and to go east. This particular device is a permanent device. It is actually a $12 million machine. I've got photographs of it, if you have an interest in seeing what the thing looks like. Let me go over some of the other things that the neighbors requested. They requested that we plant additional trees along the front of the facility. The front area along 59th Street is very treed as it is, as it now exists, but we would plant additional trees. Behind those trees are some office buildings that are outside of the area where the proposed shredder will be. Those buildings will remain, so in terms of blocking the view, you have both the trees, the buildings, and so forth. Our shredder has a -- will go up to a height, I believe, of 60 feet, but the present facility is just loaded with towers and spheres and things like that that exceed the height of this particular thing. After we went through the Planning Commission and it was approved, a competitor came to the neighbors and told them about scrap operations, and they changed their minds. And you will hear them talk about that sort of thing. We had another meeting with the neighbors last week, and at the close of the meeting, they gave us a list -- I mean, they are opposed to it, and you will hear that, but they gave us a list of other things that they wanted us to consider doing. The list are things like beautifying the entrance with some kind of brick walls with plantings. We're certainly willing to do that. There was a suggestion that we actually plant trees on the north side of the street, behind the neighbors' property along there. We're certainly willing to do that, to plant the trees at places where they want the trees planted. It would not -- we would not be able to maintain them, but they would be in the neighbors' area to be maintained. They talked about operating hours. They're consistent with the operating hours that we put into the agreement originally. They asked us to disclose our EPA information. Unfortunately, we cannot do that because the contract we have with the seller prohibits us from doing such a thing, so we can't do that. They asked for a copy of the evacuation plan in the event of fire or some other catastrophe, and we will provide that to them once we get the operation constructed and know how that will work. And with that, in that same regard, the present facility has hydrants all over the facility. These aren't the kind of hydrants that you screw the hose into and turn it on. They have a lever. You pull the lever, out comes the water. So we're going to leave those on site so we have that in the -- if there should be some kind of fire, but we don't anticipate that to be the case. They wanted us to install a traffic light at 59th and the street that turns into their neighborhood. We have agreed to submit that to the Traffic Department to determine whether or not we're generating such a use that we would -- that it would necessitate having a traffic light. This wouldn't be a traffic light at our entrance. It would be over at the entrance of their driveway, but we're certainly willing to submit this to the Traffic Commission and let them decide. They also wanted to be sure that this will be a new shredder. We provided them with documentation showing the cost of it, that we've ordered it, and it certainly will be a new shredder. The neighborhood across the street was planted and developed after this I-III property was established. I believe the plating date was actually 1973, about the same time that the General Motors plant was announced. So, you know, I guess the neighbors are going to tell you, "We don't want it. I don't know where to put it other than I-III. That's what the zoning ordinance says. It goes into I-III with a special permit." One other thing, just anticipating a comment they may make. The way this machine works is that these cars go in. There are hammers and things like that that beat it into small, little round cylinders or whatever, however it happens to come out. It has a water injection system that injects water into that process, so it keeps the dust down. That water is recycled over and over. It's not turned out into the sewer lines or anything like that. But in the process, some of these cars have tires on them, they have dashboards, they have plastic and things like that. This state-of-the-art machine separates that out. That material that comes out is called fluff, and each day, that fluff is gathered up. It is taken to the landfill, which you all just got through discussing, and the landfill will accept that. In fact, we operate in Kansas City. The landfill operator here is the same one that operates in Kansas City, so we know that that will work. But keeping the fluff out of the operation eliminates any possibility of some kind of fire or something like that. So that's the nature of our project. If you have any questions, or if you'd like to see pictures, I could certainly provide that. And all of the conditions that we could do have been incorporated into the program description, and I've provided city clerk with a new program description, which would include the conditions that we put in after the first meeting with the homeowners and the conditions we put in after the second meeting with the homeowners, and the conditions that the city put in, so.
All right. Councilman Greenwell has opened his microphone up. Looks like he has a question for you.
Yes. Did any of the neighbors voice a concern over the noise of this operation?
Yes. Good point. That question was asked. The machine at 150 feet creates 85 decibels of noise, which is the equivalent of an arterial Interestingly, at our first neighborhood meeting, after explaining the noise situation, a lady stood up, and she said, "Well, at our church, we did a decimal reading," and she said it was 85 decibels inside the church on Sunday. So we also were asked by Councilman White to do a decimal reading out on the street at this quarter-mile distance. We had to do it in Kansas City, but at a quarter of a mile, we couldn't pick up anything other than the street noise. So I don't think noise is a factor.
And what will be the hours of operations?
They will.
Oh.
It is in the planned statement that you all have.
I've got it. I'm sorry. Thank you. I've got it. Thank you.
Anybody else want to talk before we hear from citizens?
I've got a couple of comments about the presentation. One, in the portion about signage preventing trucks going into the neighborhood, that's the Parkview neighborhood, not the Frolic Meadow. Frolic Meadow is on down the street ways. And the second is, I understand that because of the requirements that were put on you with regard -- by the seller, you're not able to release this EPA information, but would you agree to release it at a point where it becomes available to you to release it?
It's available to us. No, no, but I mean, I think in the contract, it is confidential, and that confidentiality extends after closing.
Okay.
I mean, there is, as you well know, there's a pollution problem out there. It was not created by Georgia Gulf. It was created by another entity.
Right. All I'm asking you is if it becomes legal for you, legal with regard to that contract, to release that, would you -- will you release it?
Yes, we would.
All right. We have a number of citizens that have signed up to speak. Ready to hear from them? Sounds like we are. I guess--
Are you calling citizens up now?
I'm getting ready to call them.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. I'm going to call people up in the order they've been handed to me. They'll have three minutes to speak on this issue. Glenn Gordon?
Yeah. I have a picture, so you can--
Yeah. Hand them to Councilman Mars and let him pass them around to us.
I am Glenn Gordon. I'm at 5224 Southeast 56th. Four years in the Marine Corps. I get home, go to school for a hundred years in the U.S. I retired and have been certainly enjoying that, but would you give me about six months before you put this in so I can sell my house? Because that's essentially what's going to happen. One woman-- One woman brought up in our thing, our property values will go down. Our property values won't go down, most to be taxed the same, but our houses will sell for less. I mean, they're gonna go, go down, you guys are gonna do that. Twenty years from now, that place will look like these that I'm passing around. It sounds all good in theory, they're gonna have state-of-the-art equipment and things like that, but that noise is still gonna inhabit our neighborhood, and I'm not happy with that. I am not using emotion, I'm using dollars and cents. I wanna sell my house while it's still worth what value that I think it's worth. I don't wanna sell it after somebody finds out that there's a junkyard across my street, across from my house. The other thing is, oh, the reason I'm worrying is, I lost my hearing in Vietnam, so I can't hear very well. I'm worried about the trucks that haul junk, and, and I mean real junk. They're gonna haul a car into this place. And they gave all this spiel at the meeting, "Oh, we're gonna take care of the freon, we're gonna take care of the ozone stuff, we're gonna take care of all this stuff." But, I mean, reality slaps you in the face, folks. They're, you know, profit takes, takes over at some point. I have some notes, but you guys have made all the points, lawyers have spoken, just like at Aubreyville. Welcome to Aubreyville. So, I agree with the councilperson shattered, you know, look at the future. My kids are grown and gone, I got grandkids, I like to have them there at the house, but if, if I move, no big deal, I'll move twenty miles out where they won't put it down. That's what I'll do. But allow me to sell my house before this comes in. Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn. Art Snyder?
Mr. Mayor, we'd like to change the order just a little bit.
Now, I've gotta call them up in the order I get them.
Okay. Maybe a little disjointed on our presentation.
Okay.
Art Snyder, 4709 Southeast 47th Street.
Okay.
I'm Vice President of the Neighborhood Association. My concern is the traffic that we've mentioned. The traffic gets, is the concern that I'm addressing. The heavy traffic counts predicted by Midwest Scrap Management, this is not us guessing, but they told us, up to between thirty and forty trucks a day. We have grave concerns that the traffic not build up on Southeast 59th Street. Mr. Teague addressed that a little bit. All heavy trucks and peddlers need to use the far right-hand lane. Peddlers here are the guy that drags in a lawn, a lawnmower, old refrigerator, scrap metal, not cars, the scrap stuff. All heavy trucks and peddlers need to use a far right-hand lane only, and that's eastbound traffic on Southeast 59th Street. Only eastbound plant traffic will be allowed. This includes trucks hauling fluff to a disposal site. If we count inbound and outbound trucks, the count could go up to sixty or eighty plant, eighty plants a day. Curb cut for the new entrance road will have to be widened to accommodate a third lane southbound into the plant. That entrance exit needs to be rounded or wide enough so semis with trailers can turn into or out of the plant without crossing another Southeast 59th Street traffic lane. And they've agreed to that. Not the rounding part, that was us. Only right turns be permitted into and out of the proposed facility. No left turns that cross other traffic lanes. No plant traffic, truck traffic or peddlers be permitted, permitted north of Southeast 59th. No commercial trucks except local traffic conducting business inside the neighborhood is to be permitted. Heavy car and truck traffic, heavy car and school bus traffic is currently using 59th to transport children to and from school. We do not want to impede these or any other cars or buses. To the best of my knowledge, there's no plan for the city to widen eastbound traffic lanes on Southeast 59th. How can MSM help prevent westbound traffic turning left into and out of the access road? Are there any questions with what this part of it is?
I mean, the, the things you raised, aren't, aren't those things, those detailed things, aren't they included in what his proposal is?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay. I, I just wanna be sure that, that if there are some things on that list that aren't included, we can talk about it, but it sounded to me, as you were saying them, that he's, that they're talking about restricting all the traffic to the south lane-
Yeah.
-to the south side of 59th.
Right.
All right. Art, thank you. Joyce Hopper?
Sir, uh, Council, I have a question that maybe you can make some of this discussion more clear.
Great. Why don't you bring it up and pass it out? Okay. Joyce, we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Joyce Hopper. I live at 6008 Southeast 56th Court, and that is actually not the neighborhood that's gonna be impacted as much as my neighborhood. I was-
Larry's wife.
I'm glad I could talk right now, 'cause I have to take my mom for an MRI in just a minute, so if I walk out, it's not because I'm upset with any of you, and that's why I've been coming in and out, if you've seen me. I'm a little bit nervous, you probably realized. Don't say anything over there. But I wanted, number one, say thanks to Pete White. He was really helpful and explained a lot of things. And I understand that this is probably a moot point and that we're not gonna be able to change opinion. I understand that it's zoned I-3. Don't understand all that, but I have a little knowledge of that. And, you know, the average person when they go buy a house, they don't go and check to see what could possibly be put in there. I've lived in that house for sixteen and a half years, and prior to that, I live in Folic Meadows Estates, which is between Tinker, which is off of 59th Street, the Navy base is located there, and Sooner. And there's a lot of noise from Tinker, so I don't know, maybe their decibels aren't the same thing. But other people are gonna address noise and, and how they had a thin, when the chemical plant were, how they got a thin layer. But I'm just gonna, just say one thing. I felt like I needed to come here and at least express my concerns of how this can impact not only neighborhoods, but there is a Folic Meadows neighborhood right across from there. Mine is called Folic Meadows Estates. And that how it can impact the school, which is Parkview Elementary School, less than a mile away. And I work in the school system, I work in Moore, and I have to travel on Sooner. And if any of you have ever been on Sooner, either in the morning or in the evening, it gets backed up. And I wanna thank you for the sidewalk, but it was a nightmare because it went down to one lane. And in my neighborhood, there is one way out, it's only south. I mean, we may have three ways you can get out south, but basically. And you know, you don't know, just like when you have insurance, you don't know how much is really gonna be covered until you actually have a catastrophe. Well, guarantee you, in 1999, 2003, you know how it is about an evacuation route. These people from out of state, and I don't know, I mean, I think they were very nice and they, they took the, the residents' concerns. As far as my neighborhood, I didn't even get any notice until Thursday of last week, Wednesday, excuse me. And so, I'm concerned about Sooner especially, Sooner and 59th. My daughter was one of your youth people a couple of years ago, a little red-haired kid, and she travels right now, she goes 59th Street to the Health Science Center, she goes south on Sooner to OU to take school. We located in this area because we assumed our kids were gonna be OU Sooners, and they all three were. So, that directly impacts her travel. I work in Moore, and I travel down that way, and I could see cars going north. That is a snow route, as far as I'm understanding. If traffic is, you know, something happens on I-35, guess where they go? They don't go Sunny Lane, they don't go Bryant, they don't go Eastern, they go down Sooner. Just, just go down there anytime. And if, you know, the wear and tear on the streets, also, they're talking about putting a way to get in and out. And one thing that guy did address was about, about right-hand turns, but what I heard that one guy say is they submitted the policy that they're gonna take right-hand turns, they're gonna try to prevent left-hand turns. As you're aware, 74th Street is I-240, you know, you can go, was to prevent people from I-40, you know, because there's like, you know, even just private people coming. I mean, you know, it may go all great and be wonderful and fine, but, you know, I just want you to consider there's a heart hospital just located on a, you know, on Sooner and 74th Street off I-240. The train traffic, you know, when GM was still there, man, life was miserable. And now we're gonna go back to having more train traffic again. I can hear the train from my house, I know that. I can hear what goes on at Tinker from my house. But that's, you know, I'm just saying, the city might wanna consider what's gonna happen in the Sooner Road and the congestion traffic there that we already have. This guy estimated minimally, this is his words, five trucks an hour, five semi-trucks an hour. Now, my husband says that's not a big deal, but I travel down there, he doesn't go south to work. And if there's a, you know, there's a lot of other, you know, things, if the semi-trucks come out, we're blocked. The train goes, we're blocked, it backs up, traffic backs up. So, I mean, a lot of other people are gonna address a lot of other issues, you know, property value being one of them. But I'm just saying, you know, a lot of times the words they use, and he was a really nice guy, and I really liked him, I really liked you, you were really nice. But he kept using the terms "best we can," "best we can," "best we can," and "the last thing we want to happen." I was there in 99, and I was there in 2003, and if you have a fire that lasts four hours, I mean, four days, I mean, I lived there, okay? I don't think you lived there and know what happened in the tornadoes. What happens if a third tornado, you know, things come in threes? There's stack of scrap metal, where's that gonna go? You know? People were killed by flying cars. So, anyway, I didn't address all my concerns, but I think I took more than three minutes, and I'm really glad that I could do this.
Joyce, thank you.
Thank you.
Diana Jordan?
I too have a handout.
Okay.
If I could possibly let the handout go around to the council members before I have to start. I'm not gonna read my presentation. My presentation is titled "Dollars and Cents."
Can we get your name and address for the record?
Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Diana Jordan U. I live at 5217 Southeast 56th Street. The dollars and cents of this is not just to the neighborhood, to the north of the proposed site. The dollars and cents of this is into the entire region of that city, not just the inhabitants north of 59th Street. Yes, the, the permit applicant has been generous to meet with us on at least two occasions, and Councilman White has met with us on at least three occasions, and, and we greatly appreciate that. What we're asking for is consideration, not just for the Parkview neighborhood, but to the entire area of that city that will be impacted by this operation. I know our city has done a great deal to put on a new face, and it has done a very good job of that, especially our mayor, who has brought a wonderful opportunity for our city and put us on national TV repeatedly. But do we want to go on national TV with explosions and fires and smoke and plumes that engulf a large part of our city? We don't feel that there is additional need for this type of operation in the city. I have polled some of the other shredder operators. They are not busy at this time, they can take on more. We're not opposed to additional scrap metal recycling operations. We just believe that a different place is more appropriate, more appropriate for our city. If this applicant didn't feel that there was a need for these fire hydrants and that there was a possibility for additional fire and explosions, why, I ask you please, would they need to keep the five fire hydrants that currently exist, spoken in front of this council today? I'd like for you, if you would please, just look at the numbers that I've put together to the economic impact of the city, and this is only as it's believed to be for the impact in the one square mile area from 59th to 44th, from Sooner to Sunny Lane, the negative impact to Oklahoma County and Oklahoma City as a result of permitting this operation to take place. That's all I have to say. Are there any questions of me?
Okay. Thanks, Diana.
Thank you.
Charles Emmerling?
Now, Mayor and Council, I'd like to thank you in advance for your consideration and time in this matter.
We will need your name and address for the record.
Yes. Name is Charles Emmerling, I go by Chuck, and I live at 50, 5033 Ryan Drive in the neighborhood in question that we're discussing.
Okay.
Uh, Justice, I didn't realize the sequence of events. I assumed I would have been the kickoff speaker, which the neighborhood had asked me to do. They wanted me to give a slight overview, short overview of the primary problems. And there's, as you can see from the handout that I got up to you, we have two letters, the first two pages, one from the president of the Parkview Neighborhood Association, PNA, and the other from Dr. Pam Deering, Superintendent of Schools. The document that you have in your hand there deals with three major concerns. And the first of these is the impact of traffic. It deals with the trucks, the buses, the normal workflow in and out of the neighborhood, traffic flow. The primary concern in that area is the safety of both the parents and the students who go to Parkview School. A second area of concern addressed in our handout is equipment and fire hazards. This item, as you noticed there, talks to the potential for fires that occur outside the mill itself. It also identifies prevailing south wind and the danger of toxic smoke would appear and be around the children going to the school. Approximately 700 children, or we could down five, that go there. The third major concern is economic impact, and Diana had just talked to you something about the cost there and whether it's a viable thing. The discussion there centers on additional jobs created, which there seem to be very few in this instance, operators of the machine itself and other yard people. I would guess probably fifteen or twenty, from what we've been told. The decrease in property value is another thing that has come up. Also, the cost of the fire department and their resources if they have to respond to any dangerous fires, smoke inhalation or other things like that. The request of the whole neighborhood, they obviously want it denied, the SP47 for the scrap metal operation. And I'm not obviously gonna, I'm just giving you a overview, you have the document there, it's only six pages, but it condenses down the concerns. And I've been around a little while, I'm not gonna read to the choir. So, I know you guys know your business and just here to outline, outline what we're about. Earlier, it was said there were a few things that the people wanted and they were delineated. One of the things is that we in fact have fourteen concessions, those last two pages, that deal with things that we would like to see done, particularly if it's approved and they win. We want a confirmation that these things will be done, validation in writing. The old days that we all grew up in, at my age of 74, was handshake and your word was it. Well, we can't go on that anymore. We want documented evidence of what we're doing.
You've run out of time. I'm just asking, how were they to work with? Were they, when, when you had these concerns, were, did they agree to address them?
Yeah, I had no problem with, they addressed them on the surface, they were congenial. They came to, to meetings of- They came to meetings of ours, and there was no bone of contention there. They got along fine.
Your concern is that although they agreed that it was a viable concern, they didn't necessarily put it in writing, that they would do what you're asking?
Yeah, they, well, no, they didn't say they would not. We have upped the ante from, I think initially we had four or six things that we thought we needed to light, to turn signals, and signage. But now, we, in continuing research, we've come up with a total of 14 that trees at two-inch diameter across the front of property aren't gonna stop dust or noise or anything. So, we went for a wall, and that's contained in that last two pages, and I think it was a total of 14.
I see.
And I would imagine that they'll agree to these, and some they may have to go to planning, commission, or traffic division to get the lights.
I know there is an addendum here that would have, if this went forward, they would have, this would have to be added on to the motion. I'll give you a few seconds to wrap it up, because I, but...
Okay. I have no other special thing to cover. Just that one thing, that if it's past the 14 concessions, we want confirmation and implementation would be expected from the neighborhood. Basically, the neighborhood has, doesn't like the operation. They want it moved somewhere else. And the spinoff of all the material coming out of there is going to, your other problem that you talked about earlier, the mountain down by Crossroads. It's gonna be in there, and I don't know how that's gonna go, but it's gonna be a big impact. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for coming down. No other speakers have signed up.
Um, I'm not sure that the amendments or the proposals are all in one package. Roland, would you come back up and address that? What I wanna do is move to amend the application to include all these commitments that you've made. I'm not sure, are they, are they in such form that I can just...
Pete, what I did is, on the list they provided, they mentioned hours. So, I moved the hours up into that paragraph that makes reverence to hours. I can tell you...
I'm trying to, I'm trying to address his concerns, that everything that we, that you propose is in writing and is enforceable as part of the special use permit if it's approved.
Yes. Here's their list. Beautifully landscaped brick walls and entrance, and we put that in. Evergreen trees planted and maintained along 59th. That was already in the prior one. curb cuts widened at the entrance of east and west sides of plant. That would be out on the street, and we put that in. Signage says no left turn into plant and no, and right turn only as you leave. That is in. The hours of operation, what they had, have been incorporated. They're the same as before. Will not accept deliveries under the payout of $25 and stay within the laws concerning the industry. Well, we will not, we can't do that. We can stay within the laws concerning the industry. I mean, we are guided by that. That's why we, we can't take...
If you don't pay, you don't pay out in cash, is that right?
But we, we don't pay out cash. We write a check. Somebody brings in $5 worth of recycling, they get a check. They do not get money. And everybody that comes in signs a form, and we have, I have a copy of the form here. When they sign in, they've gotta give us all kinds of information about themselves and warrant they're not bringing tanks, gasoline, things such as that, that we don't want in the operation. But we, we're not gonna give up the customer who brings in a $25 or less item. The EPA study, you addressed that. The application, they want a present, a copy of the evacuation plan. That's in that list. This one we, this one we did not include. It says, "In the event of a fire and evacuation, and evacuation is mandatory, you agree to reimburse, within reason, the expenses incurred by the Parkview residents." I mean, who knows what that means? You know, if we cause somebody damage, certainly they have the legal rights, but, you know, just to have an open-ended, if there's an evacuation, no telling who caused that evacuation.
Under the law, if you caused that neighborhood, if something happened unforeseen, it caused that neighborhood to have to be evacuated. And those people, and the people that lived there were damaged by it, you have a, you would have a legal obligation to them for those damages caused by your operation.
Certainly.
Isn't there some way that you could say that without, it's not gonna be open-ended. I mean, they're gonna have to prove the damages. You can't, I mean, I would not expect you to set up a claim shop where anybody that feels like they're damaged could just come talk to somebody and get a check. I mean, anybody that has, is damaged that way would have to, I just...
You know, we could put something in about if it is the fault of Midwest and they have damages, excuse me, we would pay those damages, but, I mean, you know, as lawyers, isn't that what the civil law provides?
I agree completely, but I do think there's a certain comfort by people that aren't lawyers that would want to, they would wanna hear something that you've, that you've expressed certainly a willingness on the front side to be responsible, even though you and I know the civil law's gonna make you responsible if you are, in fact. But I think the idea that you would put some language in there that would say that would be reasonable.
Okay. I mean, I can work...
I mean, I understand, I do understand the kind of catch-22 that is, but I still think that you have a legal responsibility to do it anyway. There's not, you might be able to say it by, we will accept the obligations incurred by any damages that we incur. That doesn't mean that you're gonna write a check for it. That means if they prove, if someone proves you have damages, unless you, if you agree with it on the front side, you could pay it. If you don't, they could go to court and get it, but you're at least saying you understand you have that obligation.
Well, if we...
It's kinda form over substance, I realize.
If we were the cause of the damages, we would certainly pay that, the reasonable damages caused.
Right. I think what I'm saying is form over substance a little bit, but I think, I hope you appreciate the fact that people like to be reassured that that's, that your intent is...
Would you like me to work on a little language?
Well, yeah, but I don't wanna, yeah, yeah. Wouldn't that hold true whether there was an evacuation or not? They won't call for the evacuation, we will.
No, it would hold true of any, there wouldn't have to be an evacuation.
Any of their operations caused any damages, then they're gonna be...
Right. I think I'd take the evacuation part out of it. That's just one thing. If you cause, if a situation arose that required evacuation, you wouldn't be the one that ordered the evacuation, as the chief points out. We'd be the one, the city would order the evacuation. But if you, if it was caused, you caused it, and the neighborhood was damaged as a result of it, you'd be liable for some civil damages. Even if there's no evacuation?
Even if there's no evacuation.
But Pete, aren't you saying, asking him to say, "We will follow the law"?
Essentially, yeah.
And I think, and we don't ask that of anybody else who comes in here, that we assume that they'll comply with the law.
Well, I know we, that's, I'm saying, I understand it's form over substance. My concern is this is not any application. This is, this is a major impactive, potentially major impactive change, and I think people like a little bit more assurance in a case like this.
But regardless of how impact, how significant the impact may be, they're still not absolved of following the law.
No, I agree. I agree. I agree completely. As, given my reputation for redundancy, I'll say one more time that it is obviously form over substance. I do totally understand that they, that whatever they're responsible for, they're responsible for, and if you don't do it voluntarily or through negotiation, a court would force you to do it if you're ultimately responsible. Just a statement that you understand that in kind of generic language would be helpful. Before I make a motion, I want...
Hold on, let me just, just take me a second. Okay. What about this? In the event, an event, in the event, an occurrence caused by applicant damages the adjoining property owners, maybe we should say in the Parkview neighborhood, applicant will pay all reasonable damages.
Good. That's good.
Can you live with that?
You'd have to do that anyway. So, but putting it down in writing, I think... And I'm not a lawyer, Pete, so forgive me. As you point out, sometimes...
You're already forgiven for not being a lawyer. You're already, you don't, you don't...
But wouldn't all that be at the end of a legal proceeding?
Probably.
So, I make him admit it right up front, I think, wouldn't they have to be proven guilty in a legal proceeding?
I think he's covered himself by using the word reasonable. If the, if the company took the position that a request was unreasonable, they would refuse to pay, and they'd have to go to court, and a judge would determine what's reasonable.
I'm not trying to add to your legal...
No, no, I, I can, I can, this language is okay. It's gotta be caused by us. It's gotta cause damages. They'd be entitled to their reasonable damages. They ask for us to provide ways in which contaminated soil and uncontam, and contaminants, ways, a list of ways you will dispose of contaminated soil and other contaminated hazardous materials. The practical answer to that is that if we have, in the bottom of the pit where that water circulates, there's a time when that's scooped out. We have to take it to the landfill, and they've gotta have an analysis of it to determine what it is, whether they will accept it, which they will, but there's a price depending upon what it is. But we don't know until that happens, so I don't know how we do that.
Well, you have EPA requirements that will require you to dispose of it some way in a legal method. If the landfill down the street doesn't take it, you're gonna have to find somebody that does.
That's exactly right.
Okay, I understand that.
They want an amended copy of the permit application. I think that is the program description.
That's what we're talking about doing now.
Install traffic lights on 59th. We address that by saying that 59th and Mackelman, by saying, and I'm paraphrasing here, that we will submit to the traffic commission a request that they study and determine whether there is a need for traffic, a traffic signal at this location because of our increased traffic. If we cause that and that has to be put in, we will pay that, the price for that signaling. A new shredder, we put that in the plan, and then we, also, we added applicant will plant 15 two-inch caliber trees on the north side of 59th. This would be, they would decide where they want it in relationship to the people who back up there. If some of the neighbors at the meeting said they want it, wouldn't it be nice if we had trees there? And we will do that. We just want them to decide where to put it. We don't wanna go over and stuff them in somebody's backyard or on that property. But they would have to maintain. Those things are in the plan description.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that, to amend the application to include all these concessions that you've made, and, you know, I expect you to get something to me, to the Neighborhood Association, and ultimately, I mean, probably first to the city, but very quickly after today, probably today, if you can do it.
Well, it will all be in that plan description, except the liability.
Let me tell you something I wanna make sure you understand. There is a great deal of concern about, and I think to some extent it's beyond what is necessary, but, but there's a great deal of concern about the impact this has on that school. That school and that neighborhood are integrated about as well as any neighborhood in southeast Oklahoma City. So, the idea that we prevent traffic from going north on Mackelman, and we prevent traffic from turning across 59th Street into your facility is of major importance. So, both of those are matters that'll have to be considered by the, the traffic light is another matter, but, but the major impact is gonna be not permitting truck traffic to go into, into the neighborhood and permitting truck traffic only on the south side of 59th. Those are, those are matters that'll have to be discussed by the traffic commission, but I wanna be sure that that gets done immediately. I mean, I want that, the application made. I wanna be notified of it. I wanna be able to talk to my traffic commissioners and find out, and make sure he shepherds that through, because he needs to know what I know, and that's that the impact into that neighborhood would, we need to minimize it. We need to eliminate it, if at all possible.
The plan description says this regarding signage. This is, one paragraph says, "Applicant will post a sign at the roadway exit directing all exiting traffic to turn right only." That's, that's one we can control by putting a post in the ground. The others say this, "The applicant will request that Oklahoma City Traffic Commission erect a sign for westbound traffic on 59th, which will prohibit left turns into the entrance of the special permit area."
What I want, though, to be sure is we get that approved by the traffic commission so a police officer could write a citation if he finds somebody doing it.
Well, the only way I know, and maybe somebody can suggest a better way, is that we would, on each of these signs, as well as the signal light, we'll go to the traffic commission and submit that to them. Now, I've never been to the traffic commission, so how to do that, I assume is to write to the traffic department.
Have you ever been to HP Commission?
A couple of times.
Well, it's kinda like that. Kinda like that.
But nobody applies to me to go to the HP Commission.
I understand. I move to amend the application to include the, I don't know what, what program description that was submitted today with the minor amendments that we've talked about here.
Second? On that map? I'm looking at it there. Can someone point out the...
It's north in that neighborhood, across 59th Street.
Okay, so it's on the other side of 59th? Okay.
Yeah, it's north of 59th. It's probably about as far into that neighborhood as this use permit is south of 59th. Yeah, it's a block closer than to 59th than this is, but it's the north side.
Skip your mics, not working correctly.
I apologize, Ron. Right. Point of information on the issue of fires and explosions, do, is there any type of information that shows that these type of operations have caused?
Let me tell you how this arose. The, there was... The, there was a fire at a facility that they own in St. Joe, Missouri in 2004. The, there's articles in the newspaper, which were handed to the neighbors and which I have, describing that fire, and apparently it was a bad fire. There were tanks that had propane, that were there. There was fluff. So we changed our procedures, and the procedures we have now are hauling off the fluff. I don't know why the propane tanks were there, but we don't accept those. I've got a letter from the city manager of the city of St. Joe that I was gonna hand you all that says, Midwest Scrap did have a fire in 2004. After modifications were made and brought the facility into compliance, there's been no incidents since that time. I have a set of the compliance rules, what somebody signs when they comes in, when they come in, and they will not bring high-pressure cylinders, compressors, rags, asbestos, lead-based paint cans, that sort of thing. And personally, I called up there and talked to the, the man who keeps all the records on calls. There was, there've been three calls out there since 2004. One was a false alarm, one was an IMSA call for somebody who was injured. And we turned in a trash can that was burning on some neighbor's, adjoining neighbor's property. Those are the three calls since 2004. And we've changed our procedures. That old machine that was there is gone. The new machine is different, better. I mean, that's, that's the reason that the fire issues have come up.
Okay, I, I-
That's one reason, but this is an attractive site. It already has fire suppressant hydrants there, we're just gonna leave them there. So we don't believe we have fire problems. We have addressed those, and I can put this in the record if you all would like.
No, I, I didn't mean to put you on the spot in reference to that, just from my own information, because I, I vision a similar type of issue that may soon be part of Ward Seven, and I just wanted to make sure, when I saw these issues in reference to, to the issue of the fire hydrants and so forth, that, you know, wanted to make, get some clarity as we look, as the history, if you, as you knew it. So thank you so much, I appreciate it.
We remove all gas. Nobody can bring a car in, they've gotta take the gas tank off. They have to take the air conditioning compressors off. And they, most of the cars come from a reoccurring customer. And they, they roll the cars over and look underneath, they open up the trunks to see what's in the back, and they do their very best to keep those kinds of things out. And they make everybody sign, you know, thank them.
Skip, with regard to the fire question, I've talked to the chief this morning, because that's a question that has occurred over and over and over. I talked to the, our fire chief this morning, and he said that since the 2004 fire, he knows of no fire problem with this kind of operation. There, there are fires in scrapyards, but not ones that are operated like this one is, where it's self-contained and all, and step back and where they haul the fluff off every day and all that. He said he's, he was unable to find any concern about the fire.
Okay. Pete's made a motion, and we have a second. Any other comments or questions from council? Ready to vote? All right, cast your votes, they pass unanimously.
And I need to move the, move the item.
Cast your votes now on the item itself, pass unanimously. At this time, I'm gonna ask the council to turn your attention to eight N, eight N. We have a consultant who's from out of town, has a two o'clock flight, and has requested that he come up and give a short presentation and still be able to get back to Tennessee. So will Phil Thompson come forward? Phil, we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Phil Thompson, I'm Principal of Thompson and Associates, Nashville, Tennessee.
Okay.
And-
Jim, do we need any setup on this item? This is an item that's being introduced.
Right, this is a, a item, a new ordinance regarding to, to HP districts and, and preservation guideline standards with conservation, sustainable efforts in that area. And we've had a consultant, and we've had a lot of process in place, and Phil's going to do this. This is the first time we've seen it, it's a introduction. The council will see it two more times prior to adoption.
All right, Phil, go ahead.
Just a little bit of background on this project was, it was funded through the U.S. Department of Energy grant and also from funds from the city. It builds on recent projects by the National Park Service and the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and it revises the existing standards and guidelines, sorry, go back, with a new format and language. And one of the things that we took a look at was how design guidelines have progressed over the years and how they have been integrating sustainability increasingly here in the last few years. And so we did research, we contacted each state historic preservation office, the National Trust for Historic Preservation, the National Park Service, and the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions. And we found while some recent guidelines have sections on sustainability, such as in Davidson, North Carolina, Loudoun County, Virginia, this project, Oklahoma City's project, is the first in the country that makes policies with design review and sustainability explicit rather than implicit. Sorry, I'm trying to get, okay. And we've got some publications that have just come out in the last year, developing sustainability guidelines for historic districts from the National Trust and the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, and illustrated guidelines on sustainability for rehabilitating historic buildings. So we're right in the mainstream of where design guidelines complementing and integrating with sustainability is going, but this is really the first project of its kind in the, in the country. So why green your guidelines? One is to align historic preservation with your community sustainability programs. Educate property owners on making their buildings more energy efficient. It justifies preservation design review from both design and sustainability standards. And it also helps to build support for historic overlays and preservation design review. Some of the basics in the green guidelines, preserve original historic fabric, reuse and recycle existing materials, repair in kind with like materials or closest sustainable materials. If repair isn't possible, we look at replacing in kind with like materials or the closest sustainable materials. For new construction and additions, we look at minimal impact to historic buildings with the use of sustainable materials for new construction, and also connecting materials conservation to the sustainability ethic. This was a long public process. We started this project back in September of 2010. In February of 2011, we met with neighborhood representatives. We also recorded a program detailing the, the project on your channel 20, and that ran for about six months. On April 5th, we had about 150 people come to the neighborhood meeting at Harding School. And between July and August, we had about six separate different meetings with staff and neighborhood representatives, with about 20 to 30 participants at each, at each meeting. We also had a preservation expo that took place last August at the convention center, and we had three presentations done there, along with lots of different booths and a lot of interest with that expo. There have since been other meetings, the draft has been posted on the city's website for comment. Comments were received during that time that we took a look at and integrated into our draft. And now the Historic Preservation Commission has reviewed where we are with, close to the final product, and the planning commission, we had a meeting with them as well, and the recommendation for adoption. So what exactly is in here? The revised preservation design standards and guidelines, outline steps for review either by staff or the Historic Preservation Commission. And we looked at a lot of different elements that could be readily reviewed by staff that would just take administrative review thereby saving the applicant some time and effort. It integrates maintenance recommendations throughout that, again, emphasizes just what you need to do or would like to do with your building that doesn't require any review at all. Provides guidance on energy efficiency and building rehabilitation. And it introduces each section with a policy statement and justification based on sustainability principles as well as design principles. We encourage the use of permeable paving for water conservation. The guidelines provides clearer guidelines for window repair and replacement, identifies appropriate alternative materials for porch floors and columns, and identifies alternate appropriate materials for exterior siding replacement in new construction. The guidelines place more emphasis on energy conservation and retrofitting, provide recommendations for insulation, limiting energy loss in our older dwellings, encourages the use of awnings and reflective roof materials to help cut down on solar gain during the summertime, and also identifies appropriate locations for the installation of solar panels and shingles, which we see as a increasing application requirement in the, in the future here. No requests for that. This is a page out of the guidelines that shows the inherent energy efficiency of older dwellings and how they were really designed to be energy efficient. When you look at buildings constructed before 1920, those are the second most energy efficient buildings that we have in the country. The ones that are the most efficient are the ones built in the last 10 years or so. So there's a lot of energy efficiency already built into our historic buildings, and we underline that in our guidelines. And these are some of the sample pages. As you can see, we tried to make the guidelines as user-friendly as possible. We have over 100 photographs of details and buildings that are from the historic districts themselves, lots of different sort of drawings and illustrations. The guidelines streamline the review process. They identify cost-effective ways to be energy efficient. And again, because this project is the first of its kind, it's gotten a certain amount of interest around the country. We were featured in a trade publication last fall. The National Trust is doing a story on the green guidelines in an upcoming publication this fall. And it's doing this, why? Because this is a very innovative project in the forefront of preservation and sustainability standards. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Yeah, go ahead, Meg.
I had a quick question. We talked about window replacements, porch floors and columns, siding, and is roofing addressed? That is an issue that I hear.
Yes, as well, certainly.
And are we looking at being able to use, I think there's a statement in here where it says the closable, closest sustainable-
Right.
...material. Are we looking at being able to substitute some of the new materials for tile in historic neighborhoods?
Yes. Yeah, there really are not that many original roofs left in your historic districts. Most of them have been replaced over time due to storms, hail, you know, with asphalt, fiberglass, shingles. So we are seeing advances in, in roofing materials with more reflectivity. And the other thing that, that's real interesting that we may see in the next five or 10 years are roof shingles that are solar shingles, which actually look like, you know, fiberglass or asphalt shingles from the street. And those could be very, very useful.
Well, there's also material that looks a lot closer to tile than it does asphalt shingles-
Correct.
...which in the past we seem to have gravitated to asphalt rather than the more sustainable material.
Yes.
So I'm happy to see those changes.
Absolutely.
Here I have a question.
Yeah, sure, Pat.
Do we have standards like this to cover new construction, energy efficiency standards?
That'll be the next item, sir.
If, if it's a good idea for historical homes, it ought to be a good idea for new construction as well.
That's the next item on the agenda, it's not, we probably won't, we'll go back on the agenda, but it's, it's our next item coming up.
All right, thank you, Phil.
Thank you, appreciate it.
How about a motion then to have this item introduced today?
Move approval.
We'll vote first on item eight N, one. Cast your votes, pass unanimously. Let's go ahead and get a motion on item eight N, two.
Move approval.
Okay. Cast your votes, and those items are moving on down the chain. All right, that puts us back on the council agenda at item eight G. This is the third time we've had the opportunity to review these broadband cable television definitions and modifications, and we're gonna be voting on items G, H, and I separately, and this is the franchise agreement with our, our cable upper. Comments or questions? Is anybody here from the audience wishing to speak at this hearing? All right, cast your votes, we're voting on item eight G. It passes unanimously. How about a motion on item eight H? Cast your votes, passes unanimously, and then item eight I. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously, too. Move on to item eight J. This is also a final hearing, and it tightens up some language in the zoning and planning codes. This is for final hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on item eight J? All right, how about a motion then from council? Cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item eight K was introduced at the last meeting, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight K? All right, how about a motion then to move this item forward? Cast your votes on eight K. It passes unanimously. Item eight L is being introduced today, will get us in compliance with state law, and Bob Teener's here to give us a little more details on that. This is item eight L and eight M. Bob?
Just briefly, items L and M are companion cases. As you probably recall, University of Central Oklahoma opened their music academy in Bricktown, and it kicked in a requirement, you can't have, sell license within 300 foot of a school or church. So the state law was amended recently to allow a college or university to waive that restriction if they notify the ABLE Commission, the district court, and they publish a notice within, for 30 days within a newspaper. Item L basically is amending chapter five, our alcoholic beverage ordinance, to reflect the state law wording. And then item M is chap, amending chapter 59, which reflects the state law references to state law. It amends our ordinance to, to determine how we measure it, which is the same as the state law. And then it changes the notice requirement for the 10 minimum name, 10 minimum names for notice. And this is the introduction of both of those items.
Okay, we're taking a look at item eight L first, and again, this item is introduced, and we'll be setting a public hearing for July 31st. Any questions for Bob? How about a motion then to have this one introduced today? And a second. All right, cast your votes on eight L. It passes unanimously. And then item eight M is the companion item. Cast your votes, and that item is also introduced. Again, a public hearing on July 31st. Item eight N, we've already dealt with, so that moves us on to item eight O, and David Adcock is here to discuss the new energy code opportunity. And this item is being introduced today, we'll be setting a public hearing for July 17th, and final adoption scheduled for July 31st. Good morning, David.
Good morning, David Adcock.
Good afternoon, I guess I should say.
Yes, good afternoon, you're right. David Adcock, I'm Development Center Manager. The city received an Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block grant, and some funding from that grant was used for consultant services to look at where the city is and where it needs to be in regards to our building energy codes. The Development Center has been working along with the Office of Sustainability and working with this consultant. And at this time, I would actually like to introduce Kelly Parker. He's with the consultant group, and he will present for us.
Hi, my name is Kelly Parker. I'm 5828 Northwest 72nd, and consultant here for the city of Oklahoma City on the energy codes. And so we have a small presentation where we're talking about that, next slide. And you're welcome to ask me any questions as we go through. The first thing is Oklahoma committed, I'm gonna start from the big picture, Oklahoma committed to accepting R.A. funds, or stimulus funds. The hook to those funds was only one thing, that the state adopt an energy code, not a building code, an energy code. And so with that, the next one, Governor Henry at the time said, "We don't have building codes in the state," so we adopted a state energy, a state building code. And the city of Okla- And the City of Oklahoma City just recently adopted that code in April. O U B C C is the commission that the Governor Henry set up, 12-member commission, and they adopted, they adopt the new codes. And that was for 2009. So the state's task is to get the state energy codes up to speed. Next slide. So the first state task was to adopt a residential energy code, and that meets or exceeds a 2009 energy, International Energy Conservation Code. That's the first task. Second task for the state, to adopt a commercial code that meets the 2009 code. And number three, not only have we, we have to adopt it, but we have to show implementation of 90% compliance by 2016. So that's every permit pulled in the State of Oklahoma, even out in the rural areas, have to show 90% compliance. And Department of Energy has come out with documents to show how states are to comply and the methods of compliance, and we've got a few more years to do that. So let's now bring that down from a state level to a city level. And now the City of Oklahoma City received an Energy Efficiency Conservation Block grant, which David talked about. The funding was used to develop an energy conservation code. Interestingly enough, we'll see, we've already got almost all the pieces already here. So the Office of Sustainability manages that block grant, and the Development Center administers the project. Today's presentation offers an energy conservation code, first one, for the City of Oklahoma City, for the council consideration. So number one, there's two, two parts to this energy conservation code. Number one is the International Residential Code of 2009, which was adopted by city council on April 3rd. Of course, it went into effect May, May 3rd. And then currently what we have for the commercial sector, so commercial buildings out there, have the Commercial Energy Code of 2003, International Building Code 2003, Chapter 12. So we already have a residential component and a commercial component, and the residential's already what we're proposing. So today's next, I guess. So in preparation for this presentation, we've already met with local stakeholders, home builder associations, we've conducted peer city reviews, we've met with the Oklahoma Uniform Building Code Commission, Construction Industries Board, Building Code Assistance Program, that's on a federal level, to clarify exactly what these Department of Energy requirements are. And we've researched all the pertinent materials and developed an energy conservation code specifically for Oklahoma City. So the energy conservation code, here's where we're going. Number one, the residential side, we've already adopted that. You have already adopted it in, when you did that, in April 3rd. The commercial was, if you remember, a couple of slides back, 2003. All we're doing is updating that to the new 2009 code. And so City of Oklahoma City's energy conservation is giving us the opportunity to really begin working now for our city's future, because in 2016, we have to report that and say we're in 90% compliance. So we're moving down the, moving down the steps. So our process, there's no cost to this. Oversight is by David Adcock, the Oklahoma City Development Center. It's free web-based compliance software for builders. Training is provided by the grant funding, and matter of fact, we just held training with the Home Builders Association yesterday and this morning. Implementation and recognition of the Oklahoma City Energy Conservation Code. Education of the stakeholders. We think this is very important, is to educate the people that are affected. And now the new codes, the state codes are here, cities adopted the code, now it's educating the home builders and other affected people. Inclusion of the commercial aspect of the code, and we're just bringing that up to speed to the 2009. And staff training. So helping to bring the staff of Oklahoma City that are out there, the actual code officials doing the work, are actually being trained on what the code is. That's our presentation.
All right.
Happy to take some questions.
I have a question for David.
Yeah.
How is this, the new code that we have put in place for residential energy efficiency?
Yes.
Compare with the standards that were set out in the historical area code that we took a few minutes ago?
I haven't reviewed those guidelines, but I'm, those are national guidelines. They're all going to be based on the 2009 Energy, International Energy Conservation Code.
The ones that are in the historical preservation one?
Yes. Now, we're just a little bit, what we adopted is just a little bit off. We adopted the residential code, which is not the energy conservation code. Am I, I'm going to confuse you a little bit.
You have.
Okay.
I'm easily confused, sir.
No, no, it's, it's a little bit. So imagine this was a, the energy conservation code. It's, it's not very thick. What we adopted was a building code, which is a whole lot thicker. The book's about two inches thick. Part of this code is already in this code. This is the code the Department of Energy says you have to adopt. We're almost there, and we've got several years to get there.
The, just to explain a little further, the residential code that was adopted in April, there is Chapter 11 within that residential code.
That's a big thick book.
Is, is specifically, is specifically regards energy efficiency in residential dwellings.
But my question was, David, how does that compare with the historical standards we just, is it more severe, less severe, about the same? Two choices.
Yeah, on, on historical preservation, that one, I would, honestly, I would have to look into that, because I don't know how it ties into that. You may be able to answer that better.
Fair enough. I don't know as a legitimate.
Yeah, yeah. It really is. We haven't looked into that part of that.
Historically. So we've taken care of the old houses. We're taking care of the new houses. Is there any effort or thought of those houses in between that aren't historical and they're not new, like my house, for instance?
Well, the code would require the houses that went into remodeling or anything, like any new type of construction. So if, if they did remodel, but just existing homes, it doesn't, it doesn't back into those.
What, what level of remodeling would trigger a requirement to bring a house up to these new standards?
Well, it, it would not be required that the whole house be brought up. It would be just the part where the construction was done.
If I remodeled my bathroom, all I have to worry about is my bathroom being environmentally sound.
That's true.
Thank you.
Or if you replaced windows?
I've done that already, thank you.
All of your windows.
All right, any other comments or questions for David? All right, David, thank you. This item is just being introduced today, and citizens are invited to come down for the public hearing on July 17th if this ordinance is accepted by the council. Still have a quorum. How about a, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And we also need a motion on item eight O two. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight P is another item that's being introduced today, and Renee Hutton is here to explain how it's going to affect our retirement system. Good afternoon.
Good mor, oh, well, it is afternoon, yes. The proposed amendment is not making any changes to the plan. It is a requirement that was suggested by the Internal Revenue Service agent that was reviewing our plan during the latest qualification process. We already have this language in two other sections of the plan, in the normal retirement age and in the, and the requirements for the eligibility for retirement. They are just wanting it added to 40/70, which is about vesting. So there is no impact to the plan at all.
All right. So this is not going to change anything?
Correct.
All right. It's my kind of ordinance. All right, we're, motion in a second. The item being introduced today, item eight P, and a public hearing will be set July 17th. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight Q is a rate adjustment for our off-road permits. This item is being introduced today. Public hearing will be set for July 17th, and Marcia's here to tell us more.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is a $15 a year change. On a $60 a year permit, the money goes toward volunteer work in maintaining an off-road vehicle facility at Lake Stanley Draper. It's, again, a volunteer group maintains about 1,500 acres in the Draper Reservation. This impacts perhaps 1,000 annual users.
Okay. And this has been through the Water Trust?
Yes, the Water Trust does recommend this.
All right, how about a motion then for this item to be introduced today?
I'd like to leave it with a brief comment.
Okay. I'll believe that when I hear it.
What can I say? This is, this agreement is between the city, the Water Trust, and this off, motorized off-road group is probably the, as good an example as I can think of of a partnership between a user group and the facility. We transformed something out there that was really difficult. We had people riding ATVs all over the place, causing erosion, all kinds of things. And just bringing all this together has created a really good situation. So it's, it's a business. We ought to look for more partnerships like this with user groups, because this one has really been successful.
Lot of user groups with the Water Trust, that's for sure. All right, let's cast our votes then for this item to be introduced today. This is item eight Q. Passed unanimously, and a public hearing has now been set for July 17th. Item eight R is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight R?
Your Honor, I'm here for our law student.
Okay, come on up.
Your Honor, Cardinals Henry, we live at 3041 Drake Stone Avenue in Oklahoma City. Also own this property, 15720 Northwestern Avenue.
Okay, this, this project's in Ward 7.
Yes, Your Honor.
All right.
I want to thank the council and the mayor for having, allowing us to speak today. I'm sorry we didn't give our notice, we didn't realize we had to. My wife is here, Dr. Bonnie McBride as well, Your Honor. She also owns the property.
Well, and what improvements are you going to make to the property?
The only, the property has been, the City of Oklahoma City has decided with our permission, it's a severe repetitive loss property. It was literally underwater on June 10th, 2004, 2010.
Okay.
And so the, we're not aware of the holes they're talking about in the house. Now, the shed, we'll be happy to tear down the shed and move the fence and fix the pool, but the house has to stay intact for us to do the repetitive loss process, to file that grant process. Without the house, there's no repetitive loss process. So the only thing that we see that is in the notice is that the, the sunroof, there's a hole in the sunroof, and we're not aware of any holes in the outer wall of the house. Those are the only two items in the house.
Charles, what can you add to this?
Well, the, the house is in very bad shape. It's full of, the walls are gone, the ceilings collapsed. It's, it's fairly a health hazard, as you can see from that. There's insulation that's piled up in the house. We are receiving a lot of complaints from the neighbors. Pool stagnant, it's not being maintained, nothing's being done at the property, and we're just responding to complaints.
Okay. Well, it's been two years. What are you suggesting we do?
Your Honor, actually, it's actually been inspected yearly by Chase, who has not given notice of this proceeding there with the mortgage holder. They're there every month inspecting the property to maintain its integrity.
It's not their inspection I'm concerned about, it's his.
Sure, Your Honor. Uh, Your Honor, we would just dispute that the house isn't any disrepair needed to be demolished, as far as the shed, the pool, or the, whatever.
Well, I mean, your neighbors are complaining, our staff is complaining, is saying that it's dilapidated. You're going to need a better answer than that.
What is it we could do, Your Honor?
Well, you need to work with him about addressing the concerns, I mean, for the neighborhood. Have you been paid off on the insurance?
No.
And why is that? Are they just dragging their feet?
Well, they paid off a part of the contents and part of the structure, but the $400,000 house wasn't covered. There's a limit to the severe repetitive, to the FEMA program.
Okay, and you were explaining earlier, there's a reason you want to keep the, the structure intact. What was that?
Well, it, uh, under FEMA regulations, if the house is insured, we are allowed to claim a severe repetitive loss grant. And that would pay the entire value of the pre-flooded house, $405,000, including the property. And then the city would take it over and become a part. However, absent the house being there, we could not do that grant process.
How long do you think that's going to take?
Well, you know, the city, we worked with the city for about a year and a half, and we couldn't, it wasn't resolved to our satisfaction, so we filed a notice of claim. And that expired in May, so now we're going to have to file a lawsuit, I guess, to get them to move. Mr. Couch?
Have you made an application for this severe loss?
Yeah, actually, the, the city has to make the application on our behalf as a homeowner. You're not allowed to make the application. The city, through Mr. Crouch, told us they would in September 2010. They drafted some documents in December 2010, and then they didn't, we agreed on the numbers and everything, but then they didn't get it back to us till June 2011 with some language that had, had more cost than we agreed to. So in September 2011, we complained, we complained in June 2011. By December 2011, there were no new drafts from the city. And so then we filed our notice of claim in June, in January 2012.
But I thought you said you couldn't file a notice of claim, that only the city could file a notice of claim?
Only the city can file the severe repetitive loss grant through FEMA. We filed a notice of claim to the city saying, "Please pay us for our house that you haven't paid us for."
Can somebody tell me what a severe repetitive loss claim is?
Well, I believe that's actually handled through Public Works, and our information is that they declined to participate in that process.
I still don't know what it is. Wyland, do you know what it is?
Dennis Clavers knows a lot more about this than I do, but, but it's, it's a, it's a grant application to FEMA that we have to be involved with that states it's a, it's a competitive, or a repetitive flooding situation.
So are you suggesting that this house is located in a place that had repetitive flooding issues?
Absolutely. The city has certified it as that, and then made that application to FEMA. Just haven't finished the paperwork to do the process. They didn't finish it for a year and a half over our sustained complaints, and month by month asking them why it's not been finished. In the meantime, we're paying mortgage, we're paying $200, $200 a month to maintain the property, five acres. And so we, we filed a notice of claim to hopefully encourage the city to do the process quicker. They didn't, and the notice of claim expired, so now I have to sue the city for the value of the property, which we think was caused by the flooding negligence of the city, a separate process from the SRL grant.
From the photographs, it doesn't look like you're getting your $200 a month for maintaining the property.
Oh, actually, the, the front of the property looks really nice. If you look at the front of the property, they have photographs.
Charles, what are your main health concerns here?
Condition of the property, there are holes in the roof, there's, there's substantial pieces of the walls, there may have been probably plate glass windows that are gone. The pool is stagnant, it's not being maintained. There is a, a large accumulation that looks like the insulation that's gathered, that's not been cleaned up, inside of the house not been cleaned up. Now, they are, they are cutting the glass, I mean, grass, so.
Your Honor, it's Dr. Bonnie McBride.
Hi, I'm, I'm a co-owner of the home. All of the damage caused to the house was caused by the flood and the subsequent mitigation that's required through the FEMA flood insurance policy, which we do carry on the home. And so the walls are, do not exist because of the damage caused by the flood in 2010 from Chisholm, Chisholm Creek, which I think you're all well, well aware of, because it damaged many communities in that area. And so we're not, you know, we were instructed not to rebuild by the city, because we were going to go through this process. It, it doesn't make sense to rebuild. And so we covered the pool, the pool is covered. We maintain the lawn, we have it mowed, and we have the weeds, weeded, yes. Is it, is it uninhabited? Yes. And it is not going to be inhabited again, because we are not allowed to rebuild, because the city has instructed us that this is now a flood way, not a flood plain. So they've reclassified the property as well. So we're really in a position where we would like to make a reasonable agreement with the city that we feel like it benefits them and us. We do not feel like we should take the full brunt of the responsibility, because we've already lost all of our belongings three times from this house since we moved in in 2007. And it also flooded again in November of 2011. So clearly, this property is not going to be inhabitable again, and we do, we would like it to be torn down too. We would like to resolve this. But I don't think that this process here is the way to resolve it. If we want, if the city wants to move forward with the SRL process, we have to have a property that is insured through FEMA in order to qualify for the SLR grant. And they pay 90% of the, go ahead.
Mayor and Council, I do recall some of the details about this. It's been quite a while since I dealt with it. We did work with the Henrys for some time on the severe repetitive loss grant program through FEMA. The requirement was that the city had to front the money to, to basically buy the property, and then we would be reimbursed. We were trying to find a way to do that, and the only way that we could find a way to do it was through our Greenwich Utility, where we would spend the money and then FEMA would reimburse us. There were some issues, it seems like, with, with a deductible of like 10% and some demolition costs. We tried to work those things out with the Henrys, and what I recall is that we could not work those out, that they didn't want to deal with having not work those out, that they didn't want to deal with having a 10% reduction on the price, on the, the value of the house, plus the demo costs. And we could not reach an agreement, and I think we just suggested that they file a claim, which I think they did, and the claim was turned down a few months ago, as I recall. If you want, if mayor and council want to leave, want to give them some additional time, I understand that they won't be able to get their money for it if the, if the structure is gone. If you want to give them some additional time, we'll try to get the public work staff to work with them again and see if we can get this resolved.
Okay. Well?
Can, I just wanted to add one thing. There are two other precedents in the state of Oklahoma. Both Kingfisher and Tulsa have done exactly this SRL process, and they did cover the 10% difference between what FEMA won't cover and the cost of, of the, of resolving the property. So there are two other counties that have done the paperwork, they know how to do it. So I think that we have resources in our state to go to them and find out how they did it and, and where they got the 10% difference.
Yeah, to me, that should be a separate issue from the, the immediate concern that the neighbors are having with the house. You know?
Your Honor, we actually agreed to the numbers a year and a half ago. We agreed to pay the 10%, and we agreed to pay the demolition because FEMA was going to give us a separate grant for the demolition. The, the numbers were never in question since December 2010. What's been in question, as according to Mr. Clowers, is the city getting the money to buy the property, which they never informed us of. So a year later, we were sitting there without an agreement, without any update as to what was happening, and so we filed a notice of claim. But they actually agreed to do the SRL process, they told us our house was SRL processed.
Well, these do seem to be extraordinary circumstances. Why don't we give them additional 30 days and let our two departments work together? You okay with that, Charles?
I think Dennis requested probably 60.
60? Okay. Counsel, okay with that?
I was going to say an additional.
I tell you, I would ask you, the homeowners, that, will you work with Charles? There's some immediate concerns about the stagnant water and those types of things.
We'll take care of that, Your Honor.
Take care of, take care of that for your neighbors, and then we'll get our, our departments to work, and maybe this will be back to us, maybe it won't.
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay? How about a motion then to put 60 days on this?
September 25th.
September 25th.
Second.
All right, cast your votes. And that particular item is moved forward 60 days.
Thank you, Your Honor, Councilman.
Anybody else here wishing to speak under an item listed under 8R for dilapidated structures?
Move the items.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8S is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8S? All right, how about a motion?
Say.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're on to item 8T, and this is a public hearing. This is a kind of modifying an expenditure to the public safety sales tax.
We, we had a, a error of $20,000 as we went forward in that and what we've previously approved, and so this is to, to modify the resolution so that we're in compliance with the actual amount spent.
Okay. So anyone here wishing to speak on this item? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8U is a support agreement for the DELL TIF.
This is a annual support agreement that we put in place for, for the DELL TIF in, in conjunction with the Economic Development Trust.
Move the item.
All right, cast your votes. Item 8V is a second year agreement for the Oklahoma, for the Economic Development Trust to work with the Myriad Gardens Foundation.
Yes, and as that was set, set up, there was a, a budget committee that was put together for the council representative on it, and Mr. Ryan has sat on that budget committee.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We've already dealt with item 8W. Item 8X is a minor change in our investment policy, and Bob Ponchilla is here. Good afternoon.
I will make this very brief. I've been asked just to give you a brief update on the investment policy. We are in the process of making just a few, like as the mayor said, some minor changes to the policy itself. Policy does require an annual review during this past year. During our review, we just noted some more or less cosmetic changes for many of the changes that we're recommending. A lot of definitions added, you know, some references, changes, that sort of thing. There were a few key changes that I do want to just touch on briefly. One is the addition of, within the title of the investment policy, to include general bond obligation proceeds. Now, the city treasurer's office does invest the city's operating funds, but we also do invest the general obligation bond proceeds, and we just wanted to clarify that. Section 4 of the investment policy covers the, a delegation of authority from council to me for the investment of city funds. There is a small, some minor language that we're adding to this. Previously, in order to purchase, sell, or trade any securities, required the approval of both the city treasurer and assistant city treasurers. Of course, municipal code allows assistant treasurers to act on my behalf in regard, in, in the event of my absence or incapacity. So we just wanted to clarify that language to say that purchases, sales, and trades can be approved by the city treasurer and/or assistant treasurers. Again, just a, kind of a minor change there. Section 7 covers our broker dealer relationships. We do, or we were previously required to update our broker dealer list once a year. Now, in reality, we, we do look at that list more often than not, so we just added some language to say at least annually. Section 12 covers the diversification of our investments. Again, it's one, it's that, don't put all your eggs in one basket concept. The policy does prohibit us from investing too much of the city's funds or owning too much of one institution's assets. It also prohibits us from using too high a percentage of the, or investing too high a percentage of the city's portfolio in just one institution, which is, which is a good policy to have. We do have some exemptions to that, that particular piece of the policy for like US treasuries. And what we're doing is we're just adding government-sponsored enterprises, GSEs, agencies, to that portion of the policy. We want to be able to invest a, a little bit higher percentage if we need to, in the event the market conditions require that. Attachment 7 is just a, it's a certification statement for our broker dealers. When we bring on a broker dealer, we ask that they sign a certification statement. The statement just says that they are registered, that they are subject to the oversight of the SEC and of the industry itself. It also requires them to have, you know, note that they do have an awareness of the city's investment policy to maintain compliance with our, with our rules. This concludes what I have for investment policy changes, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions on item 8X for Bob? All right, thanks, Bob.
You bet.
Have a resolution.
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8Y is a presentation on the Convention Center project. Mike Meis is here.
The presentation that we're making today is a summary of the project requirements documents that have been submitted to you previously for the Convention Center. The presentation itself is a summary of the project requirements process and what's included in those documents. You may recall, we've been through this before with several other projects. There are two primary purposes for the project requirements documents. That's provide guidelines for architects and engineers who are engaged to provide architectural and engineering services for those projects, and to provide a summary of the project for the MAPS III citizens subcommittees and advisory board. We utilized our consultants, we've utilized input from the subcommittee, and we've, and from data collected from other relevant sources. The project requirements contain an overview of the project background, the project description, site description and analysis, space descriptions, functional relationships, design considerations, budget, and schedule. This Convention Center is envisioned to replace the aging downtown Convention Center that's currently in use. It will significantly increase its size and, and scope. Will have new ballrooms, exhibition halls, and banquet facilities. It is intended to capture a larger market for the city of Oklahoma City. We've included the, a summary of the budget, which is included in the implementation plan, which was passed by city council last year. That budget is currently being adhered to, and we also provided a copy of the schedule. Our overarching concern in the, in preparing the project requirements documents was to honor the budget that has been set in the implementation plan by council, and to provide as much flexibility in the document as possible so that we can maximize every dollar available, made available by MAPS III for the Convention Center. We've worked diligently with the subcommittee to achieve that, and we think this document meets those needs.
Okay. Questions for Mike?
Mike, I've, I've had a growing concern over the last probably 60 to 90 days. That stems from the Boulevard controversy that was happening about how to do the Boulevard, whether it ought to be at grade, all those questions that keep coming up. And one of the things that's brought to, to mind to me is that the location of this, this location reduces the buildable area, the developable area that would be created by the Boulevard by 30%. I mean, it's taken three blocks, half of one side of the street, on three blocks. It also changes the way that we can develop the park. And I, I worry that, just basically, that the, the location there is going to, by changing that location from where it was to where it is, is going to change dramatically what we, how we look at the Boulevard, how we look at the park. I don't expect you to even respond to that today, but I, but the more I look into what we're going to do with the Boulevard, and I'm almost to the point where I, I believe that the Boulevard is, has lost its relevance because of the location of the Convention Center.
Councilman, I, I can briefly, I will briefly respond to that, just by saying, way of saying that there has been a very conservative effort on the part of the parks subcommittee, the convention center subcommittee, transit, city staff working with DOT on the design of the Boulevard, to try and coordinate those efforts as much as possible to minimize some of the, the issues that you've just enumerated.
But just as I look at all the different things that fell in place as a result of moving the Convention Center from where we had originally kind of watercolored it in to this location, I just see things changing with regard to the way the transit's routed, with regard to everything, and I'm, I for one had no indication. That's my own fault. But I didn't really look at all the different things that would have to change as a result of moving that Convention Center site. Because when I see what it did to the Boulevard, I don't like that. When I see what it did to transit, I don't like that. When I see that, what it did to the relationship between the Central Park and, and the Myriad Gardens, I don't like that. And that's just me, but I, I, as I, as I start to work through it, I, it troubles me. So I just, I would like to kind of be on record, a day late and several dollars short, that, that I've now started to think about some things that are pretty dramatic, I think, in terms of the planning process.
Those were all discussed at the time the Convention Center site was selected, and you're pointing out, Councilman, some of the negatives that were out there that was discussed at that point in time. And we will certainly, I mean, those were, those were discussed.
Yeah, I understand, but, you know, maybe they were. But I didn't have any idea we're going to have to block, I mean, we've got other things that aren't, weren't put in the deal. When the Thunder games are over, we block shields because we're going to gridlock it because we don't have access to the interstate? I mean, I don't see an overall comprehensive plan. That, that really bothers me. When I get out of a Thunder game and I can't go home without going a mile out of my way through Bricktown because shields is blocked because it'll gridlock traffic to the south getting on I-40, I'm thinking, now, nobody told me that that's going to happen. I mean, so maybe everybody else knew that. Maybe we all knew that we're going to gridlock I-40 when we, when we did it the way we did it. Maybe everybody else knew that we were going to change the route of the transit and add miles, worthless expenditure, in my opinion, when we ought to be going someplace else with the transit thing, rather than having to go an additional place. That, that we're going to cut off the park from the park. Maybe, maybe everybody else knew that. I mean, I'm, I'm willing to admit that I'm the only one that doesn't understand anything up here, but I didn't understand that. And I'm not sure everybody understood the full impact of all those different things, all those little blocks that fell in place when we moved that Convention Center. That's, I don't want, I don't want to get into, because I'm not sure where I am on it yet. But as I start to look at it, I'm troubled by that. We've shared this before. I think, I will make one point that I think is relevant though, because those discussions did go on, but you, there's, there's two things. The Convention Center, there's a vision that the Boulevard frontage of the Convention Center could actually be a, a retail corridor. It could be coffee shops, it could be a newspaper stand, it could be something along there to make it look like a Boulevard. The other one is, if the, if the Convention Center's not there, that property is still privately owned, and whatever they build is going to be just as bad, if not worse, than what the Convention Center was. Because that, that site doesn't necessarily, wouldn't necessarily be an open contiguous addition to the park, because the private ownership of that, you know, would want to, they would welcome the ability to put something on that very prime piece of property right there, and you're going to end up having the same things with that building that you'd have with the Convention Center. So, to say that they weren't discussed, I think is, they were, and it was kind of the lesser of two evils as they went down through there.
Okay. All right, well, let's have a motion then to approve the resolution to move the project forward. All right, Mike, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8Z, time to pick a sign.
When we passed the resolution regarding non-smoking, the council asked that we develop some sign alternates, and then get some public input on those signs and bring that back for consideration. So that has been done, and Kristy is here to talk to us about that.
You are about to have five sign options in front of you to consider today for tobacco-free parks signage. The Parks Commission recommended signs A1 and 2 at their meeting. At the time, we thought that those two signs were the only two signs that the tobacco settlement through their grantee, the city-county health department, would help us underwrite. But since then, we've learned that the health department or TSET would help us underwrite the cost of any of these signs that you're looking at. So I think from talking to them that they could help us pay for the manufacturing of about three quarters of the signs that we need, which is great news for us. So the Park Commission recommended signs A1 and A2, A and A1, based on the information they had at the time. And after the Park Commission expressed their preference, we put these four, five signs out online, and we held a, asked residents to weigh in on what signs they like. And as a result, we found out that sign A came in with 27% of votes, sign B, 17, sign C, 6, and sign D was the resident's favorite with 50% of the votes. Good news too is that our city sign shop can manufacture any of these signs with the exception of sign B. It's the only one we can't do in-house.
Which one is that?
Sign B.
And why is that?
And why is that, Christie?
I think it's the, the coloring and the fact that there's no, with the green and the blue and the leaf, that was one of their, their problems.
So we, if I heard you correctly, we think that perhaps the Parks Commission voted for A for financial reasons, not for design reasons?
That's the information that they had at the time. The, the nice thing about Sign A, I will say, is the fact that the state parks are putting that sign up throughout the state. So you see that Breathe Easy logo on doors, on restaurants, and then you'll also see them later on this summer in every state park.
That was the negative about it to me, was that we now have seen it for a long time, all over buildings and things around the community. I, I mean, I think maybe it blends into the woodwork more than something new and fresh. So I definitely am a Letter D voter.
Does the state have the authority to ban parking in the state parks?
Yes.
And the city does not have the authority to ban smoking in city-owned parks?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
So the implication of Signs A and B might be that we do have that authority since it's a copy of what the states have?
Good point.
I'm concerned that we, we suggest to the public that we have authority that we don't already have.
Well, how about a motion then for one of these signs?
I have a motion for, never, Letter D.
D is in, is in dog, okay?
Yes, D is in dog.
All right. We have a motion, a second. I just reminded, we have someone who signed up to speak. Brittany Hodges? Are you just here to answer questions, Brittany, if we have any, or do you have some comments that you want to make?
Um, you know, I've been in good communication with Christie, so there's really no further information. My name is Brittany Hodges, address is 5301 Eden Drive. Just to clarify about the state parks, the governor's executive order covers the state parks since they're state property.
Okay.
That was passed recently.
All right, thank you. All right, well, we have a motion and a second, so we're voting to choose Design D in our Cast your votes. Item 8AA is to call a special council meeting for us to interview potential judges to fill our vacancy. How about a motion and a second? All right, cast your votes on 8AA. Passed unanimously. Item 8AB is to allow American Idol to come in and hold auditions. We all right with that?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8AC is a revocable permit, sir, someone to hold the annual eighteenth annual Dew Draper twice duathlon out at Lake Draper. Is there anyone here representing this event today here? All right, how about a motion then? Cast your votes on item 8AC. It passed unanimously. And item 8AD is an amendment to our fiscal year budget.
Mayor, I ask we hold off discussion on that till we, after we go to executive session?
Okay.
So we can, if you don't mind, we just skip over that?
All right, we'll just skip over then 8D and we'll come back. And we'll move on to item 8AE, and this is to extend our collective bargaining agreements, which is seemingly like an annual exercise to extend these beyond the calendar, beyond the fiscal year. How about a motion? And then, this first one we're voting on is item 8E1. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. How about a motion on 8AE2? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then item 8AE3. And cast your votes. And it passed unanimously, so all of those contracts are extended. Understand we do not need executive session on item 8AF. How about a motion then?
That's correct.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8AG, understand we do need executive session?
Yes, sir.
All right. Cast your votes to move this item to executive session, and it is moved on to executive session. Item 8AH, understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
All right, cast your votes then. That item passes unanimously.
What, stricken?
Stricken, better word, thank you. Item 8AI is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8AI? All right, how about a motion then? Cast your votes. Those claims are denied. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. How about a motion on that? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 810 is items from council, and Pete has one to get us started. Pete?
This is one we've had to discuss a number of times, that we amended two weeks ago to cut the number of people that had to be notified from fifteen to ten. I think we've talked about it. I move it, I move its adoption.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Comments or questions then? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We have other items from council. Pat, you wanna keep us going?
Just a couple of things, Your Honor. First of all is an announcement. I've had a lot of calls about the condition of Northwest 122nd Street between May and Hefner, Hefter Parkway, and that project was included in the, the front balance project that we adopted last year for highway impro, I mean, street improvements, and that project is under contract and work should start soon to plan off that street and make it a little better street. The second thing is a question. The opening concert for the Philharmonic this year is the fifteenth, September, and I was curious, is that we have a schedule on bicentennial park and the reopening of the main entrance to the, to the auditorium by September fifteenth?
Those dates are in mind, and we, we are, the park is to be done in time for, for the anniversary.
This is not for the anniversary, this is for the first concert.
I understand, it's for the first concert, but, but.
It's, it's in advance of the anniversary celebration.
Right. Those dates are in mind, Councilman Ryan, and, and we'll verify that again, and we'll make sure that there are, if it's not totally completed, there'll be good accommodations at the time.
Okay, 'cause there'll be, a lot of people won't go in the front door, and there'll be a lot of people trying to get up that ramp if we don't do that something. Thank you.
All right. Nick?
I guess I just had two quick things, Mayor. I would, um, hope everybody had a chance to see the fabulous fireworks on the river Saturday night. We started celebrating Fourth of July early, and it was just absolutely wonderful display. They had a full day of free family activities down on the river, culminated with a beautiful fireworks display, and I, I guess I would encourage us to use the river for those kinds of events and for our community fireworks celebrations more frequently. And I do want to encourage everybody tonight, there's a celebration out at State Fair Park. Susan Powell, former Miss America, will be there with the Oklahoma City Philharmonic, and I believe there are fireworks out at the park tonight and then at Red Hawk Stadium tomorrow. Lots of celebrations, and I want to wish everybody a safe and happy Fourth of July.
David? Thank you, Your Honor. Well, this, Pete, if you think we've got gridlock after a Thunder game on I-40, you ought to try leaving downtown Oklahoma City at five o'clock as it relates trying to get on Western Avenue. And now, I was trying to avoid Western Avenue one day last week and use Pennsylvania to go south, and it has just as much problem, although it does not have a west on-ramp. And that does lead a concern, as was mentioned earlier, about the Boulevard. I do think it's important that we look at the plans of the Boulevard a little bit more in depth before we agree to that, just given the, the problems. I think Shields Boulevard is great as far as a, the planning and the design to get on I-40 from Shields. Unfortunately, for a lot of people that live, I mean, that work from the middle to the west side of downtown, they often go towards Western to exit, and that truly is a problem. Had they just put in another lane at the time of constructing that to accommodate those trying to access I-40, I think that would have helped. Same with Pennsylvania Avenue, although you can get on I-40 going east from Pennsylvania. Had they worked or thought in terms of the, just the sheer volume that hits there at rush hour, I think they could have adopted a, again, another lane with that on-ramp. So I am concerned. I think the state does a great job throughout the state with its highways, but these problems create a concern from an urban standpoint, and I just think we really need to look at the plan before any contracts relate, just to make sure that as a citizen of Oklahoma, we are truly getting value for the cost of that new Boulevard. I think we've got plenty of streets already in Oklahoma City, and, and I think in terms of allowing traffic to flow, Reno Avenue could serve as the alternative to a, a new Boulevard. We just rename it from Reno to Oklahoma City Boulevard and tie in I-40 to there. I'm just beginning to question, as Pete mentioned, the value that we may be getting from this Oklahoma City Boulevard, and, and I'm a citizen of the state just as well as a citizen of Oklahoma City, and I want to make sure every dollar is expended to where we get equal or more value than what we're paying for. Thank you.
I just responded very quickly. You know, that's, part of, part of the Boulevard is to get the people in and out. That's, they actually, ODOT calls it egress and, egress and ingress and egress to, to downtown Oklahoma City from the interstate system was their actual official title of the Boulevard. We are preparing a, a proposal to council, or not proposal, a presentation to council to, to go over the Boulevard, the different options that are out there, and, you know, and talk about the, the traffic circle, talk about the connection on our, on, on to Oklahoma and some of those issues. We're planning on making it at the next council meeting on the seventeenth, the councilman, or Mayor Cornet, and I believe Councilman Shadid are both out of town, and Councilman Shadid asked we put that off until the thirty-first, so we will be doing that.
Okay. Pete? Gary?
I'll, I'll watch it from the other end.
All right, city manager reports?
All right, I do want to point out that we do have the, the June sales and use tax collections. We talked about those numbers in the past, but that's the actual report. And then at the last council meeting, we talked about Sunday transit service, and, and they're, asked Rick to come up with, with some additional options that are out there on, on Sunday transit service, so those are included in the report, and if we want, we can discuss that further if we are gonna discuss the budget options here later on. And then we also, the council directed Rick to come forth with an RFP to take a look at the transit system on a large, and he mentions that in the report, and we're hoping to get that RFP on the council meeting next time for the seventeenth. Okay?
We'll strike item 10B and move on to citizens to be heard.
Well, okay.
Fair enough?
Um, I think he probably wants that passed.
Oh, do you want, okay. Does someone want to make a motion then on item 10B?
I don't understand why we need to pass a resolution if he's paying for it. Have we ever done a travel resolution approving a councilman's travel when the, no city dollars were involved? I'm, I'm a little curious about why he needed that.
I'm not, I don't believe we have passed a resolution like that, Mr. Councilman Mars. Kenny, Kenny worked on it primarily with, with him.
Kenny didn't leave me any instructions, but just a thought that pops into my head is kind of an authorization that he goes to represent, you know, he's paying for it, but you're saying while he's doing that, you know, he's paying for it himself, he's representing the city.
I'll second.
All right. Cast your votes then on item 10B. Passed unanimously. We have three citizens that have signed up to be heard. They'll each have three minutes to address the council. Floyd, thanks for your patience today. I know it's been a long meeting.
Thank you. I'm Floyd Shaw. My address is 3111 North Lake Avenue. I'm here because of what Mr. Pete White had to say earlier, that when he makes a phone call, things get done. And I'm here because I am tired of, I'm an electrical contractor. I own Complete Electric LLC, state license nine-six-three-five-zero. I have filed numerous complaints to the city. It's, let me go back, because of the time constraint, I have a, a great number of things that I need to talk about, but, you know, starting all the way back in October of last year, I mean, I'm not one to complain, but I have, I'm, I filed a complaint through the city action line about an illegal wiring job that I felt was a danger to life and property, which is the exact purpose of the National Electric Code and the National Fire Protection Act, which I have to adhere to. And having said all that, by policy, my understanding, that they submit that question to the city for the inspection department to try to come up with some sort of reasonable answer and respond within two weeks to that request. And at that, two weeks after that, I called in, they had not received a, a response from the city, so they resubmitted the question. Two weeks later, I called back, they still had not received a response. I'm basically at that point demanding a response because I have three addresses of, of three homes that a company, a house-living company has bought, are renovating, they're wiring illegally with illegal, unlicensed, undocumented workers that are doing jobs that are definitely a danger to society, to the people who are gonna be buying these homes. And they instructed me to go to Gerald Weiderman, Chief Electrical, City Electrical Inspector's Office, and file my complaints there. So I did start calling him and left detailed descriptive messages over and over and over. I, I ultimately made about three trips to his office each time. When I went the first time, after four attempts to contact him, buy his phone number that he's supposed to call me back on, he, he failed to call me, so I went up there and saw him, and he wrote down all of this information as if it was the first time he had heard it, told me that he would look into it. After repeated attempts later on to try to find out what was going on, I made another trip back up there. He told me that he had sent an inspector over there, that the inspector looked at this gutted house that had been completely rewired on the inside and told, and he said, this inspector said, that that house, there was no evidence of any work going on whatsoever. Now, this had started in, in early October. Here we are, clear up into the middle or late part of November. And I know that I get my feet held to the fire, and I expect that. I, I do, I'm a professional, I do a great job, and if there's any problems, I want the inspectors to find that problem and correct it to me. But when they, when they hold me to the point where I failed to put one cent worth of black tape on one wire in a, in a panel on a new-built service, and they want to reject me on that and then charge me to, for new permit, new inspection fees, whatever, I think that everybody else should be held to the same standard. Now, I can't get them to respond, I can't get them to respond. He tells me that inspector looked at it, the job, there was no evidence of any work going on. So he gave me his direct cell numbers, I asked, I told him what was going on, he said he would send somebody back out after the first of the year, had to go back up there. He tells me that they had finally gotten a contractor and pulled permits on that job. That had been done by somebody else. All right, well, that, I let, you know, I let it go at that point. Now, there's been other things that's gone on and on and on over the years, a lot of things that are in this inspection department that I feel are totally violations of code and conduct, there are misrepresentation of the inspection department, they have done, they have overlooked things that are serious problems. I, I've given a lot of testimony to a lot of people, but after I realized that Gerald Weiderman was not, was stonewalling me on a bunch of issues, I came up here to talk to the city manager. He wasn't in, so Steve Hill, your chief staff, came out and talked to me on the nineteenth of June. He referred, took a bunch of notes and told me he, somebody would be in, in touch with me. That night, Bob Teener called me. We had a brief conversation. The next morning, I called him back, we had another long, longer conversation on the phone. That was on the twentieth. I was scheduled to have a meeting with Laura Johnson and Bob Teener on the twenty-second. However, on the twenty-first of June two thousand and twelve, I'm pulling into the parking lot of Home Depot on Northwest Fifty-Ninth in May, and there was a gentleman standing in the parking lot as I was pulling into this parking space, talking on the phone. And this is kind of, this is my point right here, this is why I'm here. That gentleman approached the side of my truck and asked me if I was Mr. Floyd. He had a black shirt on, said Elite Electric on there. I said, yes, I am. He said, is there some kind of, you got some kind of beef with that property over there on North Chertel? This particular property that I had been This particular property that I had been complaining about? I said, yes, I do. I said, I got out of the truck and I said, who gave you my number or my name? And he said, Gerald Weiderman just called our office and told us that you've been filing complaints against our company and the jobs that we're doing. I don't think that's any of Gerald, that Gerald Weiderman is supposed to be doing that. And I have not been able to get anybody to actually take me serious that I think that's a direct threat to my life, to my property, and to my company. I want that man to, if I have to be held to the fire, I want him to be held to the fire too. They, now.
Floyd, can you wrap it up? Can you sum this up?
There's been a lot of conversations going on about this stuff, but in a nutshell, I want something done about it, period.
Okay. Thanks for coming down.
I want some people, some outside independent agencies, outside, everything gets, keeps getting bumped down. I've given Ed Shadid, my city councilman, the information, he mails it to the city auditor who then turns it back over to Bob Teener, it's right back in the same loop. I need somebody to take a look at it and do something, make a phone call and actually get something done for me. Thank you.
Just so I can respond briefly, he's had some complaints to a number of people, to Dr. Shadid, to Laura Johnson, to Bob Teener and folks in the auditor, and so it is being investigated and the city auditor is on this one and doing investigation on it, that's our plan. The city auditor doesn't work for me, he works for the council.
Right.
And so the city auditor is where, that's where it is at this point in time.
Okay. All right. Thanks Floyd.
Thank you.
Joe Nelson?
Joe Nelson, Oklahoma City resident, Mr. Mayor, council, I'm here to make you smile if I can. I know I have it in the past, I may have a little trouble reading because I don't bring my glasses, but you all bear with me, I'm gonna make this as colorful as possible and interesting for everybody. What I've seen here today for the first time that I've been able to stay that long, Oklahoma City is really growing big time, big time. But I assure you, I'm here for a matter that I do believe that most, all of the people in this city wants and needs and it's called security, or better yet, peace of mind. I prepared this short speech simply to prove a point, Oklahoma City is a place to come, live, work, call it home. Whether it's a personal or corporate business, or you're a worker, or someone else, or yourself, we have unlimited proven facts that winners do exist and come from Oklahoma City and Oklahoma, and there's a lot of them out there. We all want nothing more or better than see Oklahoma City rise and move ahead, but in growing up comes a responsible and financial cost, mandatory cost, the people, or businesses, or jobs, even yours. Everything we all live by and upon daily depends on it. I'm speaking about security, and the mere word "security" is in itself a liability, but uniquely changes in so dramatically as the word was used earlier by Mr. Couch and Mr. White, a mandatory asset that we cannot live without. The people of this city, like I said before, whether it's business large or small, a worker or retard, even on the sick list, they all live, work, or survive on daily on every street in Oklahoma City. We talk about our police during conversations and often remarks that we have heard at times, and other times as ourselves, where is the police when you need them? Well, my answer is clear and it's accurate. They're out there doing their job. The pay and benefits are small, the hours are ungodly, and the rewards, well, to a police officer, a good peaceful quiet day would be what he'd hope for, just like this one we all had. It was great, I enjoyed it. But there's no job that police officers like better than protecting this city, and we all, yes, do have a police officer that's a cut above and beyond. There's not enough of them to go around, but it's very simple. For every one officer of 500 people, and if I were a gambler and doing what they do each day and every day, I'd say these odds aren't even in the book, but excuse the way I'm phrasing this, but those odds, ma'am, are damn sure real. We have and we need more officers, both male and female, and both sides have more than distinguished themselves very well for simply being ordinary people like mothers and dads, husbands and fathers, wouldn't you say so? Oklahoma City Police Department doesn't have to bow its head to anybody. Our officers were cut from the finest, and if I may recall, some of the many officers I know personally is Officer Valerie Littlejohn. The first woman trained and selected on the Oklahoma City Police Department Tactical Team, and you don't get that job by being a wimp, any stretch of the imagination. In 1955, Oklahoma City Police Department welcomed its first six female officers, and to this day, the original six, only two are still alive and with the police department. In closing, at the police headquarters on the second floor of the records section and on the north wall at another prices, you will see many photos of very police officers in different uniforms in one of this country's. I cannot explain what it will do for you, I do know what the effects did for me, both then and now. Growing up these 70-plus years and being on both sides of the fence, a dear friend of mine, Ed Beasley, whose picture's on that wall, a Marine sergeant who served in Vietnam at the Tulai Combat Base together with me, he unfortunately stepped on a landmine and lost both of his legs. And mine and others don't matter, but what does matter, he was first an Oklahoma City police officer. He didn't know, I didn't know the rest of the officers whose pictures were on that wall, but I can tell you this, their honor and their valor was and is still there. I would like to make a request of each of you on that board up there, that when you're out visiting your fair city, take a little time and pass by the front of the Oklahoma City Police Department on Couch Drive. Don't worry, you don't have to go in. Just briefly stop in front of the steps and view the stone markers that are standing there. I cannot tell you better than that where you will read or see for yourself, but I can tell you this, those names you will see there are replicas of what your police uniforms are today. That's representing this vast laid-out city. I will also remind you that this includes the city's fire department as well. These officers put their long, their jobs on the line daily for us. I assure you, they are more vulnerable, just like the rest of us, they're trained and they plan, and even at times, their plans don't help, but most of all, they're dedicated themselves to their beliefs to serve and protect this city and its people. 1,000 new officers would only cut the odds to 250 to one, but they're only asking for 200. Okay, give me about 10 seconds here, and they're needed badly, and the people need them, our leaders need them, you need them. It's now up to you leaders of Oklahoma City to get them and keep them for us, so we won't have to face this all the time, the same paper the other one came out of. And I hope that $1.3 million that you all have let leak out into the papers that we're supposed to have will help get us those 200 officers. We need them, you need them. May God bless.
Roy Stafford?
Good morning, Roy Stafford, 3901 South Portland, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. High and dry, corned frays from the fair. Put your seatbelt on because I'm getting ready to take you real fast. Ms. Sawyer, I've requested more than once to sit down with you concerning the transit terminal. Permission to leave the lecture?
Yeah, Roy, you really need to go back to the lecture.
Personally, my pigmentation takes a severe handcuff mark to put a mark on my arm like that 12 days after I'm arrested, brother. And the reason I got arrested, call Rick Kane and ask him. I showed him a photograph of a uniform Oklahoma City police officer sitting behind a desk, internet surfing, cuz while I'm watching my black kids get stabbed to death at that terminal. Now, I know you've heard me before tell you that I'm always concerned about my wife traveling on that bus, that's why, brother. I am tired of these people being paid taxpayer dollars to do this. This is another form of slavery, cuz you heard me. When Toby ran, they cut his foot off. And it ain't my fault that I got a IQ that comes in 18 points short of autism. It ain't my fault that I got on a $1,000 linen suit, cuz my wife would let me wear my rings and my jewelry, I wore Peter J's, baby. Peter J damn paid rubies on 10, 4, and 12. You must have thought I was broke all my life because I played that way. My family, we ain't like that. That young lady that was sitting right here, Union Baptist Church, that's where she come from. That's where I come from. Captain of the Thunder Cheerleaders Squad, her grandparents came from that church. We are the reason that African-Americans in this town and other people of ethnic issues and backgrounds are still alive and breathing. Mr. Cornet, I don't know whether you're gonna roll the dice, but the last time I saw a presidential inquiry into possible failure by municipality to identify and correct civil rights, human rights violations was Denver. It was initiated by MJ Pierce, my mother's oldest sister's husband. This ain't no joke. I said high and dry because I know that there was a phone call placed in 2008 to put something in my mouth because I was tired of me down there clowning you.
We have executive session, we'll be back.
We have executive session, we'll be back.
We have returned from executive session, we need a motion item eight A.D.
Uh, we will...
About four weeks. All right, hold a second. Cast your votes, cast unanimously. Where's Jared?